I don't know, you cut people off. That has the ejection seat.
I just signed today about the first paragraph. It was a young woman.
We'll call orders. Five oh three on my clock. They just turned a door open. Let's see if that's armed.
Timing's perfect.
About to start, but we'll wait another thirty seconds here. So, so if you're past five, will that door be open? What are they gonna do there?
They unlocked it.
It's it's unlocked. It'll be unlocked for like fifteen minutes.
And if we hear people, we can go.
But then they'll lock us off from coming in.
Yeah. Or what? Well, I was just talking. That door will be closed right here. I don't know. That door is.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, the roll call meeting order. First is the roll call. Ms. Hanning.
Here.
Mr. Platt.
Here.
Mr. Kornick.
Here.
David.
Yeah.
He is here. We have a full house. The agenda is distributed. First item of business would be just to look that over. additions, deletions, rearrangements. Anybody got any issues with the agenda? Bring them. The motion to approve. I'll move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
My second.
Move to second and discuss it. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close save sign. Good. Okay, next item is the minutes from the December meeting. Do do do. Comments, corrections, additions, objections.
I have one comment. Page four, one. The wording about discussing that item is awkward. Can be devised to say, still to be discussed.
Sure. Just, that's fine.
Took me three times to read.
What was that subject?
The other Opera Protection Overlay Zone of amendments update.
It's just the wording is that there are amendments, but they should be further discussed or something.
Others?
On page two, about a third of the way down, there's a sentence. Chairman Ankle asked if the city has been talked to. Since you've had to talk.
All right. Others?
You got it.
I said a couple of comments that might be more useful for summary of the meeting on page four. Top of the page, some concern was brought up with a potential confusion about a new comprehensive plan and Laramie-Growth Plan. I just thought it might be useful to say where we left at. Talked about that for quite a while. It seemed to me that we agreed that we wanted to think about where the cop plan would fit in and about kind of charting it out versus going out to a consultant. First, I wondered if the minutes could just capture that thought that David brought forward. What do you want to do about the cop plan? And I think we all had sympathy that it ought to be updated after all these years. It's just a question of how and whether we could fix it to the piece. The D E S, from the I, number three, question that were asked about what to do with thirty-five acre parcels. Maybe it's just a note there to say we're coordinating that with the D E Q delegation agreement. Just to get a lot of people to know what's going on. My final thought to make the minutes a bit more useful for someone reading who did come to the meeting under seven B one, where I brought up that there had been arguments. I would add Matt Ayers noted that the lawsuit challenging the twenty twenty-three A P O C amendments had been dismissed. Kind of the take home message there. So that's, that's all I had. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes suspended. There's a second?
My second.
Thank you. If they move the second to approve the minutes as amended, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Close save sign. As our present, thank you. Okay, public applications. Just to remind yourself, procedure on these is to receive a report from the staff, followed by questions. Family here, that will invite the applicant to address their application if they choose. Then we'll have a public hearing and by public comments, if you are making a public comment, we'll just need to hear your name and address. Please confine yourself to the subject at hand. Three minutes or less, and then be aware that there is an opportunity for general public comments at the end of the meeting. We'll then have a motion to close the public hearing and proceed to discuss amongst ourselves how we want to dispose of the application. The first of same is the Lucky Star Wind Variance, V I R O two, two, three. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You want to do disclosures, conflicts of interest?
I'm sorry, let's do, let's do that. There weren't any, but let's make sure that's true. Ms. Hanning, have you got anything you'd like to share with us? Okay, I appreciate the reminder. Mr. Platt.
I don't.
David?
None.
That I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Okay. Joe, you're up.
All right. The applicant is Lucky Star Wind Phase Two LLC in care of Cogency Global. Located, this would be located pretty much straight south of Rock River. Requests approval of a variance request from the height requirements for temporary met towers. Current zoning is agricultural and current use is the Lucky Star Wind Project. There were three reviews. Rob Fisher checked in with Adam Wales to make sure that the tower wouldn't interfere with communication to Rock River, who confirmed it would not. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Holly Dyer, had comments on erosion. Her full comments can be seen in the review section. And Y dot had some questions for the applicant. And after he got the responses, Y dot had no comments. Notice has been provided by Post-Design Publication Certified Mail as required. Findings necessary for approval, the granting of this variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to other properties in the vicinity. The granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on use of other properties in the district. The hardship, which is the basis for the variance application, was not self-imposed by the applicant. And the granting of this variance is justified for one of the more, one or more of the following reasons. Staff analysis, a variance is required to allow a met tower to be taller than two hundred feet in height. The applicant has addressed the required findings satisfactorily. If the applicant's request for a variance granted, the applicant will be required to obtain approval of a temporary tower application. We have received that application and would be able to review it with approval of the request. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, including applicant and staff responses and staff analysis as referenced in this report are adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information, that they requested and required findings, documentation, notice, and notations. I've been satisfied by the applicant and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County Zoning Resolution, Chapter Five, Section fourteen. Staff recommendation is to approve the Lucky Star Wind variance request. V A R O two, two, three, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Thank you for the questions, Mr. Wilms.
Joe, David, where does the two hundred foot height limit come from for this, for tower height?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. For sure. The tower height, I think, was based on that is kind of your limit before you have to do certain things for F A A. So I think after the two hundred foot height, then you have to start doing like the white and red and lights and some of those other things. Honestly, this, this was, I think, kind of the max height when we did these regulations. That's kind of what they did. But now with the wind turbines, you know, the height is quite a bit greater than, you know, fifteen years ago. So, so I think going forward, I mean, this might be something we actually want to look at, you know, for these towers. Because, because they're, this is, I'm not, I don't think this is the first request we've had to do higher than the two hundred feet. But, but, you know, your original question is, I believe it was, had to do with the F A A rules. We're just kind of following them with that.
And then when y'all get an application, or we get an application from a non-local entity, and I believe this corporate entity is planning this project in local. Does someone come in and meet with y'all face to face in person, or is it all handled over the phone, or what happens?
Um, I mean, depends. Yeah, we meet with people onsite, we are in our office, phone. Obviously, we use Zoom, other, you know, email, internet type stuff, email. I mean, yeah, a variety of different things. I mean, usually there's at least phone calls, if nothing else, or video calls. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I have a question. So the, the wind farm itself, the location and was already approved?
Correct, yes.
How come we approved something like that without having the material geological information ahead of us?
It wasn't on the plans that were provided at the time the application was submitted to us a few years ago. I think, I think, so they provide us, and I'm just like, this is just my thoughts, is they, they provide us kind of a, a broad plan of what they're going to do. And then when they start moving forward, they have those specifics kind of lined out, and then they know better where they're gonna put some of these structures. But, I mean, there's been some, some of the, the wind farm projects we've, we've done, they have had where the met towers will go. But this one didn't have it. This is a straight tower.
To me, as a scientist, as a scientist, it seems ridiculous that we approve anything without having the data presented to us ahead of time. I understand that this one is already a done deal. But I would request that we change our protocols and we would not approve wind farms or whatever without having the environmental data available. They're gonna put in a tower that is two hundred sixty-three feet high and find out the wind resources are not good. What are we gonna do then? I, I think it's, it will behoove us when we approve things like this in the future to have, to, to require all information before. And if they want to put a tower, no matter what height it is, that's the first step they have to do before we approve any projects.
So the one thing I would respond there is, I mean, we might want to ask the representatives from the companies doing this. I, I would almost guarantee that there was data that they were using. They, say they, they have, these met towers have been up in the county for probably over a decade, a lot of these. I can't speak specifically to this project because I'm not sure exactly, I mean, I don't have in front of me where those were. But I would just guess that they, they did their due diligence. I mean, they, they're usually doing wildlife, the metrological, meteorological stuff, the cultural stuff, all this stuff prior to the application. So I think they just want them up to see, you know, if conditions change once they go up. But again, maybe that's a good question for the applicant here. They might be able to give you more specifics.
But that could, let's pursue that just a little bit. In terms of our regulations for permitting the wind energy projects, do we have a provision for analysis of the basic feasibility of the project? I would love to have thought.
No, we don't have a feasibility. I mean, the companies do that. That's part of their due diligence, I believe.
But we don't have any mechanism to check up on that.
No, so. Not at this point, no.
If they're flying off the handle and building a, a system that their meteorological data doesn't support, we have any mechanism to review that decision? I would have thought perhaps not.
No, not, not the way they're written right now. I mean.
So, so my point is, we should.
We should.
Because there could be a lot of problems, including wildlife problems such as, you know, migration corridors. And, you know, the data for bird migration is available. We need to make sure that when, just like when we do, you know, the flood plain for whatever project development, we need to do all of this. What's the wind? What's the, you know, migration corridors? What are the impacts to the county?
Well, and we do, the wildlife stuff is done. That's part of the process. That's, that's an actual checkbox in our, our regulations. But the, whether the wind is good in that area, the analysis, I mean, there have been national, you know, there's national data out there, I think. I mean, it just, basically, it goes over Wyoming and it says, good wind. So.
You just step outside. You don't need any national data. My, my point is, for future reference, that we should have the same checkbox that we have for wildlife and for water quality and invasive species and, and whatever we request responses. That you don't come and say, I want to put a wind farm here, and then you say, oh, shoot, the wind is not good enough. This should be a priori, not posteriori.
Sure. No, no, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, and we can put that down to look at the next time we update the wind regulations.
So then I have another question, probably not to you, but to whatever engineers is. If the turbines are much higher than two hundred sixty-three feet, what is it going to matter to you that you put a two hundred and sixty-three feet meteorological station?
Let's hold that as an applicant.
Yeah.
Find ourselves to kind of, the staff report procedures at this point, if that would be more orderly. Were there other thoughts for staff that will, do we have a representative of the project here?
Yeah, I think there's a bunch of folks on.
Okay, all right. So let's, you, you all heard that. Hold that thought for a moment. Are there other questions for Mr. Gersh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. So about the temporary nature of the tower. The what am I trying to say? The, the permit that you would issue based on their application, is that where there would be a condition for removal of the tower by a certain time?
So the permits are good for twenty-four months. And so after twenty-four months, then they need to be taken down at that, that time. Or reapply.
Or reapply to, to.
Yeah.
Okay. And is this on, I don't know, maybe I got confused with another site. Is this on ag or is it rural residential?
It's on.
It's on.
It's on ag, okay. Okay, that's, that's, that's all I have.
One question about the conservation district comments. And she talks about care should be taken to minimize land disturbance during construction events and reclaim the land as quickly as possible. Is that a suggestion or an requirement?
Suggestion.
Do we have reclamation requirements?
Not for met towers. I mean, these are very, I mean, there's really small booker, they don't do a whole lot. I mean, you put them on a little, I'm not, basically just stand them up, this big tall tower with some guy wires. Usually, and they come up and down.
Is it on an existing road? Or are they, they building a road to get to it?
It was part of the, uh, road agreement with the.
At the road would be built.
Well, I mean, it's a road, but yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Um, all right, I had a few. Why was there confusion about rural residential or ag?
I'm not really sure. I looked at the, that might be a question for the applicant, but I looked at the assessors because a lot of people get, you know, at like taxation and zoning confused, but it also has ag, so I, I wrote that. I noted it.
Yeah, I saw that. Just wondered why, why it wasn't obvious to everybody. Maybe the applicant could tell. Is that not what it's about? Then in your report, you wrote, strict enforcement of the standard would curtail the ability to obtain the data needed, or I guess they wrote, other wind development projects are cited in this general area and may have installed met tower structures of this height. Do we know whether they did or not, or is that?
I've looked, but I don't recall what they were. I know we've done this sort of thing for other wind farms.
And that was then, your, your follow-up comment was that have also received approval for a temporary tower? And were those done through the variance process?
If they were taller than two hundred feet, yes.
Okay. We, we just don't know if there were some of those.
Well, I don't, I don't recall. I wasn't here when a lot of these were going up, so.
Would you repeat the question?
Well, just, just have we in the past granted these variances as part of these met applications for taller met towers?
This is the first one that I'm aware of.
And I'm not offering this objection, just the implication here was that this, that happened routinely. Perhaps that's somewhat of an overstatement, but. Mr. Chairman.
They put a met tower.
This is an observation. I think we're probably all aware of that. If these wind towers become bigger and bigger, bigger over time, so what was going on ten years ago is being fortified with, you know? So they probably weren't making these tall towers, correct, collecting mineral geological data as they're firing they are.
And, and that was a comment I had as well, and it sounds to me like from this discussion, there's several things that we ought to look at in terms of updating our ags. And since the, the rail tie, those are six hundred foot towers, I think. And, and these, these boundary effects, if anybody does throw, or fluid dynamics knows are huge, so it's really important to get that meteorological data up high, so.
That's why I was wondering why two hundred and sixty feet is what they're asking on the program, will be six hundred.
Yeah. So, so the feedback to us, I'm hearing, we want to look at whether we want to add wind data to our permit, whether we want to add reclamation standards, whether we want to modify our, our tower heights. So just, we can lean for, for future reference here. And then I was a little confused, Mr. Wilms, in the if the applicant's request for variance is granted, the applicant will be required to obtain approval of a temporary tower application. We have received an application, able to review that application, but approval of this various request. So just walk me through that process. It seems like, which is the worst, which is the card?
Yeah, so we have a temporary tower application. If it's below two hundred feet, it just comes to us. Make sure it fits all the standards. It's approved. That's what happened with their other application that's on one of the maps. And so if this were to be approved, they would have to get approval of another temporary tower application for this one. And it's currently sitting on my desk. That's what that means.
So the application doesn't come through with variance attached?
No, it's approved through us.
Oh, all right. That's okay. That's what I missed. This is the variance that kicks it out to us.
Yes.
Yeah, as opposed to just rolling through. So they have the application in front of you. It's just the variance that's made it over threshold. Got it. Thank you. Okay, very small question. As I read through this, it's attached to an email from Adam Wales. It says, attachments were sanitized by firewall. It just caught my attention. What does that mean? Any idea?
I don't know.
They made it through our firewall so we could actually get the email.
I don't know. Strip out dirty pictures or something?
No, but. Hope not.
Okay, moving right along. Other questions for staff? There are none. Would the applicant like to present their, their proposal? You could perhaps elucidate some of the points you've heard us discuss here. And who is, who is here on behalf of the applicant? Seeing some smiling faces here over here. Do we need to unmute somebody?
You want to just ask a question, maybe? All, all four faces you see are for this.
Oh, all right. All right. So I guess first, would you guys like to add anything to what we've seen? And then would you like to address Mr. David's questions about heights and how you're using the data?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to jump in. Thanks for taking your time this evening. I can introduce myself briefly. My name's. Uh, I can introduce myself briefly. My name's Ricky Davis. I'm the Director of Development, uh, for Lucky Star Wind. Yeah, and I think, you know, as Joe laid out, um, you know, in, in detail, the request for the variance is, you know, really to, uh, help us understand the wind resource in a little bit more detail in this area. There have already been, uh, towers in this area that have been erected at the 60-meter size, so probably the, the size that can be permitted without variance, so, um, putting up a taller tower will help us understand the wind resource a little bit better. Um, and, you know, help, help us understand the project area in more detail with respect to, uh, you know, changes in turbine technology. Um, I'm happy to go straight into and answer, I think, the question that came up about, you know, why 80 meters or 260 feet versus, you know, 600-plus feet? Um, so if, if you want me to go there, I'm happy to, or if there are other questions, uh, uh, the, the, the folks have, then I'm happy to go, uh, any direction you would like me to.
All right, well, let's, let's dive in. That one's on the, on the table. What do you got there?
Yeah, yeah. So it's a great question. Um, so essentially, you know, where we, where we look to measure wind is at where we think the hub height will be of the turbine. So, you know, uh, a turbine has a base, you know, a tower, and then it has a generator at the top. And then the blades, you know, come off from the generator. Where the power is collected is at the generator, so that's usually at hub height. Um, and those are usually no more than 260 feet. The blades themselves actually extend out, and that's why you hear turbines, you know, being referred to as 600-plus feet, because the tip height of a turbine with the blade, you know, can exceed 600 feet. So, energy is collected by the, you know, by the wind turbine and basically, uh, you know, to the generator at the hub height, and that's where it's calibrated with the equipment that sits on top of the hub, which is very similar to the equipment that goes on top of a met tower. It's an anemometer which measures wind speed, um, along with a couple other meteorological, uh, measurement equipment, so.
Can I interrupt with a question? I didn't get your calculation. So you say the hub is where the blades attach to the tower is 260 feet? And then the total, the total height of, with the blade is 600? That means that your blade will cut through the, the ground. Your blade is taller than, than your hub. I don't understand. Please explain.
No, no. So a, at the top, if you have a blade, for example, that's 100, if you have a turbine, I'm going to use a turbine example that's, um, let's say it's a, a Vestas, uh, V145. That means your blade is half the size of 145, 145 meters. So your, your blade would come pretty close to the ground, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't hit the ground.
So how can they be 600 feet?
That's just, that's just an example of, you know, one, one potential turbine. But most hubs are at about 260 feet or so.
And then the blade is 140 feet?
In some instances, yes. But the, the technology for this project has not been selected yet. I mean, this is part of collecting data so that we can select the best technology. So we're just trying to round out the wind resource and see what it looks like if we go higher. Um, you know, with, with the technology that's being considered.
I think your question is just, 530 feet is as tall as you can get?
I don't understand. I don't understand the 263 feet, to be honest.
But, but I don't think these gentlemen are telling us that their tips are going to be 600 feet off the ground, or obviously the hub has to be at least 300, and we can all see that. So, I mean, I guess.
That's my question. 263.
The turbines that were talked about in this application were 500, around, a little bit shorter than 500 feet. Okay.
Okay, so take 260.
265 twice is 530, so there should, right? You're 15 feet on the ground.
Sorry. This doesn't make sense. Uh, my question is, why is 263 feet enough? Or 80 meters is enough and 60 is not enough? If your turbine is much higher?
Simply because you are increasing the size of the tower. So the base tower is going from, say, 60 meters up to 80 meters. And so the hub of the turbine will now sit at 80 meters, and you will not be able to calibrate all of the data that you collected at 60 meters. You don't have data that's collected at 80 meters.
Okay. Because you, we could dig into the design parameters, but at this point, we're being invited to.
I'm not going to continue asking questions. I still don't understand, but that's a good story.
Okay, is there some aspect of this that, that bears on our willingness to grant this variance?
I am extended.
Does it mean, are you, is your decision on whether to grant the variance or not contingent on your understanding of geometry of their?
It sure does.
Okay, then, then let's solve it. Go ahead.
I, if, if they're asking for, uh, information on wind, where little turbines are going to be taller than 260 feet, because they're going to be 530 feet, why are they asking for that exception? I don't understand it. The math doesn't make sense to me. I think the way I take their explanation is that they're not aiming for the top of the blade height. They're aiming for the middle of the blade.
Where they all connect.
The blade, um, circular motion. They're, they're aiming to the, the, the motor, because they're saying that's where you have to calibrate, uh, the wind data relative to the equipment they work with. So they're, they're not trying to find out what the wind speed is like at 500 feet. They're trying to find out the wind speed where, where they project their, um, the motor or the.
Generator.
The up, the hub being the generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's not right. That would defeat the purpose of collecting wind. Still doesn't add up to any money, so.
Perhaps you could ask your question in a different way, so these folks can respond. Not communicating here. Would you like to? Wait, would you like to ask your question in a, in a different way or lay out the geometry so that?
So, so, basically, they don't know what equipment they're going to put on. Right? That's what you're telling us, that you don't know which technology you're going to choose and which technology you're going to put up there. What if you put up a tower at 263 and you still don't get the right information?
So you're asking.
Because, because you're only taller.
Okay, let's, let's let the applicant respond here.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the standard across our entire industry, and this goes for the, I mean, this goes for not just the US, but, you know, in other countries too, are, really, there are two, two heights of towers that developers of wind collect data, 60 meters and 80 meters. 60 meters is usually utilized for smaller wind turbines that are less than 500 feet. When you go above 500 feet in total, now we're talking about to, to the tip height of the turbine, so all the way when the blade is basically vertical from the ground. If you're going above 500 feet, typically to calibrate the power curve on the turbine, we want to collect data at at least 80 meters. There really aren't towers, there really aren't met towers that are higher than 80 meters. I mean, in some instances, you'll see folks go up to 90, but in a wind speed area like this, in, you know, this part of Wyoming, we don't really need to go higher than 80 meters because, uh, turbulence becomes a pretty severe issue. So, really, all we are trying to do here is collect additional data so that we can calibrate whether or not the project is going to be more efficient at less than 500 feet with less than 500-feet turbines, or if it's going to be more efficient with turbines that are higher than 500 feet. In either of those scenarios, we're looking for the most efficient project that's going to have the least impact on the landscape, the least number of turbines, and it's going to come with a competitive power price so we can actually develop, you know, finish and construct the project. So, it's really just another step in the development process. Um, and frankly, I would be, I would be very surprised if the other wind farms in the county Rock Creek Rail Tie do not have 80-meter towers planned as part of the installation of those projects. And there are probably permanent towers that are planned. So, it, it would be surprising to me that the Planning and Zoning Commission has not seen something like this before. Um, especially on, you know, the number of projects that are permitted in the, in the county and the number of projects that are under construction, you know, uh, in the county right now.
Thank you. Does that qualify your concerns?
Well, it doesn't, but it tells me why they want 80 meters.
Okay.
Because we don't have any alcohol.
Okay.
Oh, no, I mean, he said this is the design process. He has described a design process that uses the size of turbines. And, which is the answer?
Okay, let's, we're not designing turbines here, and I'm sure that these guys would be happy to share their design calculations with someone if they want to dig in that deeply. Again, I would ask the question for ourselves. What do we need to know to move forward with this, this application? Uh, and are there other questions for the applicants here that bear on that decision? Seeing none. Do you have additional questions?
No.
I'm, I'm satisfied we've heard what I think I need. Glad. Thank you, guys, for showing up. Uh, I would be interested in the, the larger question that is raised of, have we approved met towers for rail tie, for example? That's the, this seared itself into our memory. Uh, Mr. Gersh, do you recall anything about the met towers for rail tie?
Um, like, since they've been, not, nothing since they were approved for their, uh, their project. There may have been met tower, I'm pretty sure there's met towers for previous to that.
Assume so. You don't remember the 80-meter discussion with respect to rail ties?
No.
Oh. I don't know that it's relevant right here. Okay. Public comments on this project. The project, again, is to put up a 80-meter vent tower. Are there public comments, uh, either in person? I see shaking hands, or online? Uh, all right, then, let's, uh, have a motion to close the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'll, I'll take a turn second, Dean.
Okay, you can be first sometime. Right, I'm going to say, to close the public hearing, uh, discussion. Hearing none. All chairs, aye?
Aye.
Aye, same side. Okay, thank you. Um, all right, back to us. Uh, how do we wish to dispose of this application?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay, please proceed.
I move, uh, to recommend the Board of County Commissioners approve the Lucky Star Wind variance request, VAR dash 02 dash 23, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of facts, and conclusions of law, as each are stated in this statement.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved to seconded, uh, discussion of that motion. Any who'd like to offer an objection to the motion? Lobby their colleagues for all of our others? Okay, here we go. Ms. Hanning, how do you vote?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. David?
Aye.
Basically, aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
I would like to make a comment, though, that we consider changing our protocols. Just like we want wildlife assessment and other data before we approve, a development project should get the meteorological data.
I, I, I think as per previous discussion, we've asked staff to look at the various things that we might want to change about that. Uh, those wind rigs, they're not that old, but the, as we saw with rail tie, that technology is moving fast.
I think he said that they did have the 60-meter tower data. So it's not like they applied with nothing.
Oh, it's just a question whether we review it or not, whether it's required.
It was part of the application.
Oh, no, they don't have to provide us any.
Oh, okay.
We assume it's part of their design.
I assume they wouldn't invest all this in that.
We, we can assume that, but.
We have seen what happened with the Tyrell, that some company put in the application and potentially the planning, and we voted for it, or the Board of Commissioners voted for it, and then it was sold to another company without.
I really didn't know all that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's all prior to
Yeah.
to this commission, but, but again, the, the action item coming out of this would be, let's look at our, at our wind rigs to see if it's appropriate to require some of that. I, I would have some resistance to us evaluating the economic feasibility of a large industrial project. They do have to go through industrial signage and so forth, and I don't, I'm sure we have the experience to do that, but that's a debate for another day. Okay, let us, if, if we've exhausted that, uh, Mr. Gersh, you're ready to move on?
Thank you.
Let's move on to, uh, conditional use application from New Life Church, CU 03. Staff report, you go ahead.
All right, the applicant is First Pentecostal Church, doing business as New Life Church. Uh, this is located about three miles north of town, um, right off of Highway 287. Uh, the request is for a conditional use to put a church on the property. Current zoning is agricultural. Current use is vacant. Surrounding use, all properties that surround the applicant's property are agricultural, other than the ones in the north, which is rural residential. And access, the applicant has received an access permit from YDOT. Um, there were some reviews. Uh, assessor Chelsea Matthews had no concerns. Tracy Fletcher, County Treasurer, had no concerns. Holly Dyer, Rangeland and Watershed Resource Specialist, had comments on erosion, fencing, and wells. Uh, her full comments can be seen in the review section. Um, Wyoming Gaming Fish had comments on noxious weeds and invasive grasses and protection of the Laramie River. His full comments can be seen in the review section, and YDOT had comments on construction within YDOT right-of-way and drainage corridors, and his full comments can be seen in the review section. Um, the applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are Chapter 5, Section 5, and Chapter 5, Section 7. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to Chapter 5, Section 5 of the Albany County zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the required notice by post-it sign publication and certified mailing. In pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, Chapter 5, Section 75, the Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings: that the applicant has provided such site plans and/or survey maps as required. Um, that the proposed conditional use shall not harm the public health, safety, and welfare of the community; that adequate public services are available for the proposed conditional use without creating an undue financial burden to the county; and that proposed conditional use complies with the following criteria. Uh, staff analysis, uh, the applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. Upon approval of this conditional use application, a zoning certificate application for all buildings will be required. Assigned permit will also be required for the proposed sign. Um, findings of fact, the informa, the information provided as part of the finding necessary for approval and staff analysis in this report are adopted as the necessary findings for approval of the applied for conditional use, uh, conditional, uh, conclusions of law. The applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommendation is to approve the New Life, uh, Church conditional use application, CU 0223, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law, as these are stated in the staff report.
Thank you. Um, let's just go around, dropping, Mr. Platt, any questions?
I'll catch you down.
Ms. Hanning? Oh?
Yeah, going in.
I was going in, in seniority orders, how we hit normally, but I could go in physical order either way.
I was going in physical order, but I'm ready to ask Joe questions.
Go for it.
Joe, can you, I didn't see any information about, like, the number of seats that this church plans. Do you know what the capacity is intended to be?
I do not, but that can be, it was for the applicant.
Okay. Um, do you know anything about the depth to groundwater out here?
I don't.
Okay. Um, I was having a hard time, and maybe I wasn't looking at the county maps correctly. Um, what, is there a way to look at the site location relative to the floodplain map?
Um, I have it, I don't, if I didn't put it in here, then I didn't put it in here.
Um, I haven't, I don't, if I didn't put it in here, then I didn't put it in here. Um, but I did look at it. It's um, basically the very, if you look at the site plan. Did I put it in here?
Well, I don't, maybe I wasn't looking at it right. I I didn't know that. I saw the delineation of the.
Yeah, so if you look.
Not the last one.
If you look at one of the site plans, um, he provided, I can kind of go off of that. So the floodplain is. Do you see the? I don't, I guess I don't know.
I'm just not seeing like in the, in any of the map legends, I don't see.
Sure. Yeah, it doesn't look like I put that in there. Um, it's in the very southwest corner of the parcel.
Looking at it, but.
And then the very southeast part uh, part of the parcel and that will be looked at uh, again at the zoning certificate stage. Depending on how their final site plan comes together and where they want to place stuff.
I I guess um. Maybe what I'm struggling with to be able to make a decision is. Not knowing whether this could be a greater than two thousand gallon per day septic system. And um. I would be concerned about a greater than two thousand gallon per day septic system adjacent to the floodplain. And so. I feel like I'm missing information that would inform my decision making about whether or not. Uh, one of the criteria for approval is met regarding, you know, protection of. Public health. Welfare. Whatever that phrase.
We don't have a septic permit um, that's in right now that I know of at least. I also don't know if he's talked to our assistant planner environmental about that. Um, but if it's also, also if it's greater than two thousand, it would go to D E Q. So I don't know if that.
And they would approve a large capacity septic system, which would be not a good thing in in floodplain. I mean, based on the decision making that the state makes in similar situations. Um, I'm thinking of Jackson. Jackson County where they just approved. A large capacity septic system in a, in an environmentally fragile area. The Tetons. I don't have. Faith that the state would be requiring advanced treatment here. So I I don't know. That that's my quandary. I I feel like I'm missing. I'm all for a a new church in the community. I'm all for um, the spiritual health of our community. But I I want to see that balanced with the health of the um, the Laramie River.
Are you, are you connected to internet right now?
I am.
So if you go to the planning page?
That's gonna take me a bit of times because.
I have it right here.
If you would like to say this.
Sure.
It's this parcel, this kind of parcel right there.
Okay, oh, thanks. The septicity up there. But I I guess what I'm concerned about is that that proximity is gonna have a shallow depth to ground.
Is there a? I don't know all this stuff. So is there a distance like away?
You have to have a four.
That you would like it?
I think by by law, you have to have a four foot separation between the bottom of your absorption field. And seasonally high water table. And I just, I just don't know what.
But is is there a certain distance like from like a vulnerable future that we've done in like the A P O Z? This is a conditional use. You can put conditions on it.
Right, uh huh.
Well, this, this was to pick up on that one of the comments I had is elaborate on that for just a moment. In fact, this is a conditional use means that that we can talk about septic and fencing and so forth. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So in addition, our approval on. Relevant factors as we see them, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so. Is there a condition that would be appropriate here? Or is it simply more information? That's legitimate.
I guess, well, one potential condition would be that if it exceeds. And Matt would have to tell me if this is okay to even condition in such a manner. If the if the capacity is greater than two thousand gallons per day, that it have, that it needs to be in an advanced treatment. System.
No, uh, we, so yeah, the regulation of systems is done through. Um, small wastewater permitting. If it's over two thousand, the county has no role in it.
But can we prohibit? Then can you?
You could, you could.
Prohibit the use of a large capacity conventional septic system if if it's over two thousand gallons per day?
Uh, you could. It would be done like district wide and it would be more. In the sense that within this district, you have to have. You know, centralized water consumer. I think that that is an option.
The fact that this is a conditional use, does that not speak to that point, Mr. Harris, Assistant General for this? It's a specific conditional use, which is a conditional use, not a use by right.
Yeah, if you can tie it back into. More of the regulations.
Ms. Hanning, can I add something to your concern? That two hundred, um, oh, two thousand gallons per day should be averaged over a week. Because a church would probably be more used on weekends.
I think they, I think they measure the flow rate by numbers of seats in the church. I mean, I think there's just a standard calculation set up in the D E Q regs that would just. And it varies too based on whether you have a kitchen associated with a facility or no kitchen.
He's got a gymnasium. So showers, pubic.
Okay, well, let's, let's go back to the procedural threshold question. So what, what say our experts?
Yeah, I suppose as long as you tie it back to the. The required findings for the conditional use.
Is one of those findings appropriate to?
Water quality?
Water quality?
And I I I guess I'd add to this discussion, so I guess. Why do we feel like there there's gonna be a water? Quality problem with this? I mean, if it's over two thousand gallons. The Department of Environmental Quality go through their permitting process and do every, I mean, they would, they would take into account the floodplain. And if they felt like it wasn't appropriate, they would tell them, no, you can't have the permit, right? Um, and just to to point out something else, this is a like almost a thirty five acre parcel. I think it's more than that. I can't remember what it was, thirty two or whatever. Um, that's a, that's a large parcel. If someone has a one acre commercial partial that's own commercial. Um, and they wanted to do some like something that used a lot of or created a lot of wastewater. And they wanted to go to D E Q and they permitted it. I mean, they would be able to do that on a one acre parcel. This is a, this is a large parcel, you know? Um, but, I mean, if you want to go that route, I mean, yeah, the water quality would be the the area to. Guess add some kind of a condition. But I I I don't know. I just feel like we don't have enough information to know that even if it is like. Three thousand gallons or a day or whatever. It's like, is that going to cause a problem? I don't. I don't know. We don't have the data.
It sounds like the applicant's talked to uh, an installer, so maybe he can.
Well, all right, let's hold that thought. I'm not prepared to say, well, they have to get a permit somewhere else, so we're done with it, which I think would speak to the tenant's concern. So let's, let's, let's hold on to that. I think it's within our purview to ask for additional information. And potentially to condition our approval on some acceptable. Level of potential. Other, did you have some other comments?
I think that's, that's mostly my concern is is missing, missing information that would. Help me inform my decision about uh, protection of water quality.
Other comments and in my earlier response, I don't mean to suggest we have to go into some kind of order, but I was. As Chair, I would like to make an explicit invitation to each of us individually to comment, so that nobody feels like we're kind of rolling along. So whoever would like to go next to.
I just have.
You're more than welcome.
So is it an error on the first page to say current zoning is agricultural? It says current, because it looked like it was rural residential on the maps in the applications.
Well, I I had the same question. The map shows rural residential.
It is what the maps say it is, so. Yes, it's rural residential. That's my opinion.
And then I I don't know, what hap, maybe you know more. What happens if a septic system is flooded?
It um, can back up into a building. It can um, surface. Outside of the the system and enter, enter the water.
So is this like a hundred year floodplain that we're looking at or what is the?
It's a hundred year.
Hundred year, so. Seems like we see more than hundred year floods. So I I am also very concerned about, I mean, and it's what like footprint of it is like twenty four thousand square feet. Twelve thousand square foot gym and twelve thousand square foot.
We can't take any of that for granted. That'll be done at the zoning certificate.
Okay, I I have water quality concerns. Very close to the earth.
Thank you.
Basically mirroring the concerns, I was wondering if it was agricultural, how come we are allowing a building? Residential or not, um, on a thirty two acre. We have a thirty five acre, right? And we don't agricultural land.
Nonconforming lot, so there's a lot of those in the county where they're less than thirty five.
Yeah. So if it's a whole residential, we're talking about something else, right? But if it's agricultural, then this would be an exception. To a building on, and and it doesn't matter what kind of building it is, right? We have a thirty five acre limit.
Not there. Only in the A P O Z.
Only in the D E Q, okay. What about, what about uh, the gym? Is it a commercial? Are we looking at a commercial enterprise? So churches have gyms?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, good, it's good to have. Anyway, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, I I would point out, and and I, for your staff report, I think would be relevant to add in terms of your applicable sections. The land use table itself, which is what identifies this as a conditional use. And then for the benefit of my colleagues, it is a conditional use, either ag or rural, rural residential zoning. So we are, we are clearly in uh, conditional territory. Um, with respect to the floodplain, the Gaven Fish comments. Said it isn't a floodplain. The applicant's comments in your review suggested not. What's what am I missing there?
So. I mean, I showed a lot of the map, but it's in like both of the south corners is where the floodplain is and then the rest of it. Is not in the floodplain and I'll bring it over to you.
And hey, the people shouldn't be using a different what?
They're FEMA, they're FEMA.
Okay, well, that was just my question. It's just, how is this conform with? Gaven Fish, they are. Seeing a different map or are you suggesting with yours that they're just seeing these corners liking that?
No, I would, I would think that they're seeing the corners and they probably comment, you know, if there's. Point one percent of a lot, you know?
Okay, uh, it it's relevant to our discussion and the David Fisher was expressing their concern that. The facility not be located floodplain. Your map suggests that that would be, that would be possible, but that, that too could be a condition or. Approval or 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 could it at this stage now? Walk me through that.
Do what?
Well, I mean, can we say we approve this conditional permit on the condition that the building be located outside the floodplain? Um, we don't have a building permit in front of us.
You don't, and if a building is located in the floodplain on the zoning certificate application, they will have to get a floodplain permit. That's how our system works.
So that would address Game and Fish's concern, sounds like. As far as the completeness of the report, I think it's also relevant that they are. And it it's mentioned in your summary that they're consistent or priority growth area three. So. I thought that that too might be relevant as we move this forward, if we do move forward to the county commissioners. And that raises a question by my.
We can't use the complaint.
Well. Okay, but what it, what we have in our current regs, say. I did hear. Without proper review, conditional uses can be incompatible with other uses within the vicinity. The conditional use process allows for certain uses provided while allowed. That suggests to me that that the specific issue of compatibility with surrounding areas is relevant. Did we miss that in our trying to sort out our zoning versus our comp plans versus our? Or? It would seem to me that 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 requires something of a finding. Regardless of whether we draw that. From a comp plan or an E G A three, what, what do we make of that requirement?
So no, ninety three oh one, no local government shall require that a land use. Or physical development be consistent with a local land use. So uh, this is squarely in that prohibition.
By reference to the comp plan. All right, let's go back to this, the substance of it rather than the.
So that that is the um, leapfrog or strips of development.
Well, that isn't the same thing as compatibility with surrounding areas.
I understand that, um. A separation of uses now to a certain extent. Yeah, so that might be something that you want to look at as holistically. Uh, is this, but I think that your, your language right there. I'm sorry, where did you find that?
It's at the top of page five dash four of the regulations or. Uh, it's the introduction to. It runs with land, like, do you want me to give you the quote?
Yeah, no, I see that. Um, so that's a purpose statement, which really doesn't have a. You know, that's not, I would not consider that to be a checkbox. Um, for a regulatory requirement. That's really your findings necessary for approval. I don't think that that, that um, kind of broad purpose based language. That doesn't have teeth to square in on a specific requirement.
Okay, I guess that's my question. As I read that, it would seem like we are being asked. Whether it is compatible with the uses in the area or not, but that doesn't say that.
Yeah, and then, then that's where you get into the findings necessary for approval, you know, leapfrog and sorts of deva, uh, patterns of development. Um, economic impacts. Air water quality, separation of uses, general nuisances. Those are the findings necessary for approval that have been. Keyed into that binding for, you know, adequacy or compatibility with surrounding progress. Um, but you know, if there was something that you wanted to. Drill on, drill in on more closely, such as that kind of community character, that that should be added to the. Um, the criteria for the findings.
Okay, and it would be not being appropriate to have a required finding be compatibility with surrounding areas.
Yeah, I. No, yeah, I think that would be.
That struck me as maybe that was just missing between the two.
Yeah.
The two pieces. Okay. As always, as we bring specific examples forward, we flesh out issues with. As always, as we bring specific examples forward, we flesh out issues with our, with our regulations and how they fit together. Okay, back to the staff report, their, their response and so forth, item six, traffic. There's a reference to automotive pedestrian safety and five-six convenience. What is that? Where are you going? It's under item eight of the, of the Stafford.
Oh, I was looking.
Findings necessary for, it's also an application. And it's in the application. I just didn't know what that was.
That's David. What the, where it says? Oh, that's a, that is not, five-six is a page number.
Oh, okay. Now this is a cut page.
Yeah, I don't know where that even came from because I didn't copy and paste anything into this one. I have no idea from this. Five-six, it, it should read.
And, and convenience, just read right through that. So what you tell us?
Pedestrian safety and convenience, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't notice that.
This proves that we read these things. I'm just believing those two things. I mean, all of this goes towards a more orderly staff report.
Like, I really don't know where that comes. Because the staff report, we don't even use that kind of number.
So for the sake of our, your county commissioners, we can just change some of that, get the zoning right, just dress up staff report. Okay, that's all I had specifically. If there are other comments, questions for these guys, are you the applicant in this case? Would you like to come forward? You could tell us why this is a great idea and staff for questions.
My name is Matt Baumgartner. I'm the pastor of New Life Church. New Life has been in existence in Albany County and Laramie for over 90 years. We're a small church and we're just looking for a place to build our building. I appreciate the concern for the protection of water quality. That's a concern that we would share as well in our exploration of the septic, so four gallons per person is what would be needed. Our current attendance is around 100 people who would like to build a building that could accommodate a little bit of growth there. We should be well under the capacity that would, that's been mentioned as far as the 2,000. What we've looked at is closer to the 1,200, which would accommodate not only our current attendance, but also a larger Easter Sunday attendance is needed or whatever. We're not looking at showers or anything along those lines. It would just be what would be needed for restrooms and those kind of things. We are looking at a gymnasium facility. I would probably call it more of a multi-purpose facility. We do want to be able to offer this to the community as something that could be a resource to the community. However, primarily it's going to be used for church meals and for children and youth indoor recreation. We have long winters around here, and so it's nice to be able to offer something for the youth and the kids of the community. So that would be our heart and desire in that is to have a multi-purpose facility where they could accommodate a number of things along those lines, but we don't anticipate showers in that in our design plans or anything like that. We have no desire to build on the corners that are more impacted by the floodplain. Our current designs and proposals are to build toward the highway and away from those. We don't want to interfere with anything environmentally with the river or anything. We'll do everything we can to ensure that what we do is not of impact to those. We love our community. We love the river as well. So that's our, our heart and desire. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I haven't had the opportunity to meet all of you. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those for this, my good.
Thank you. Questions for the best. Where do y'all meet right now?
We are currently meeting in the Quadrant Angle. We've been meeting in the Albany County Fairgrounds prior to that.
I see that, Dan. I wondered who was meeting there. Are y'all financially ready for a seat right now?
We are.
That's all I had.
Thanks for addressing my questions and concerns. And so if, if we were to condition the number of seats, would maybe our attorney would have opposition to that kind of conditioning? But would you have any opposition to making sure the seating was limited such that it would keep your flow calculations under the 2,000 gallons per day?
I don't think that would bother us because I think the amount of seating that would become an issue would far exceed any of our, our current plans and in that kind of thing, so.
It was hard to tell on that. I was like, okay, well, there's this many people per parking spot and, but then I was like, I don't have time to count all the parking spots to try to do it back at the end.
I think we would, you know, we'd need to be in excess of 500 people before it would become a, a problem. And that's where we're not even looking at half of that at this current time. That's within our plan. We, we want to build in a, in a way that will be responsible with the finances that we have. And we're a small church and so, yeah, we would love to have the multi-purpose facility and be able to serve the community and anticipate some growth. However, I don't think there's any, we would come anywhere close to what we. So we do appreciate your concerns on that. We share those concerns as well. And these are things that we looked at prior to purchasing this property because we want to make sure that there was not going to be a challenge for us moving forward. But we just may be able to.
Thanks for addressing my questions. I appreciate it.
Good.
I, I'm still worried about that just being a hundred-year floodplain, when I know we get bigger floods than that. I'd be interested to see where the 500-year floodplain line is. And I don't know, is it even, can we, do we even have the option to use that for planning purposes? We don't. Okay, because it would, well, for one thing, it would seriously damage your facility.
And we've looked at some of those maps for that very reason, because that's, obviously, we don't want that as well.
No, you don't want that.
We share those concerns from a property standpoint.
So you did, did you look at the 500?
We have looked at those and it's those, it's those corners that are impacted by those floodplains. And we're going to stay well away from those southwest, southeast corners of the property. This is, we, we had no intention of purchasing a 32-acre piece of property. We needed five to 10 acres, but this became available to us and it's more than we need. But we're going to use a portion of that, allow the rest to remain in its natural state because it's beautiful out there.
So 500 years is not that different than 100 years?
It's, it is increasing a little bit, but it's in those same areas of concern, those corners.
Okay, well, that helps. Yeah.
That was of concern to us before we purchased the property was, because we know there are areas out there that are much more impacted by those floodplains and we didn't want that to become a challenge for us.
I'm guessing it's far enough out that getting sewer out there is just not.
It's not, unfortunately.
Yeah. That's, that's a long ways out.
It is.
Okay, I have just a question and I apologize if I perhaps should have asked earlier, but it speaks to your leaving in the natural condition. What, what's the fencing anticipated? We've recently been talking about fencing and trying to keep it wildlife-friendly. Thoughts on that?
There's currently fence that is on a portion of the property. We anticipate prior to building of needing to add some additional fencing there for the cattle that's, that's in the area so that, you know, we can have that construction site secured so that that doesn't become an issue. But that's.
So is the parcel currently fenced?
No, only, you know, so there's a fence along the, one of the sides of partial fence on the other, but the, the back portion toward the river has no fence at all, which is the largest stretch of that property.
And I understand you'll have to work with DOT to satisfy that as far as your access and fencing there. So I guess I was contemplating that as a potential condition that we would want to see wildlife-friendly fencing. If, if there is fencing around, that be an issue at all?
Fencing's not my specialty, unfortunately. Certainly.
It was, it would seem to be compatible with the philosophy that you started.
I don't know that we'll fence off the entire parcel as much as, you know, the area where we would like to build just from a cost standpoint.
That's better. A wildlife, what, you're right.
Other questions for applicants seeing that? Thank you very much. Be a worthwhile project. Are there public comments? I see no other public here or online. So going once, going twice. Dispense with public comment, the absence of public. All right, which brings us to our discussion. What I'm hearing is a, a possible approval with some conditions with respect to floodplain. Let's, let's be aware that we are not approving a design here as, as our staff has pointed out to us. We're approving a use, but we can condition that use as we think best serves health, safety, welfare and morals, I think was the missing piece from your list earlier. A church on a trip that last. So what's, what's your pleasure? The potential conditions I'm hearing would be something in respect to wastewater flows, floodplains and fencing.
One thing I can say on the floodplain, and don't hold me to it, but in that area, the river valley, what the river was, is pretty wide and so pretty good step up on both sides. It is pretty well bounded. So it would take a pretty good event to get up out of the valley and then across the land. Whether that would be a 500 or a 1,000 or flood or whatnot, but it appears to be like a fairly unlikely event.
Well, I wouldn't say that because we had a major flood in 2010 that flooded way above the 500.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I, again, I'm just giving my opinion.
We might want to look at some graphs or something. That's a concern.
So with respect to those possible conditions, looking at our, our staff, would any of those be problematic, inappropriate?
Mr. Chairman, so the conditions, any conditions that are attached to a conditional use permit need to be tied directly to those required findings. So that, and that is how you reach the conditions. So, yeah, the fencing, I don't, I don't see one of those required findings where that would fit very well.
I hope it was a, an item of fencing.
That was for subdivisions.
Yeah.
I think we were looking at subdivisions there.
That's.
No, no, in the, in the application, wasn't that like my, like my. Like the last item is about fencing? Oh.
It looks like the conservation district. There are, there are three, when I did a find for fencing, there were three references. The conservation district commented on fencing. And then Y dot.
Y dot, yep.
Has there. That will construct the barbed wire fence according to the Y dot standard plan for barbed wire fencing. As part of their access permit. I'm not sure exactly what that fencing looks like. And that's also not something that we can override Y dot on.
And I was assuming that their relationship with highway would be between them and Y dot. It was the opposite that I was thinking about. So as far as explicit tie to one of the findings, the issues that have been expressed here would fall over water quality, specifically floodplains and wastewater discharge.
Is the floodplain part of water quality? Or is that more prevention of loss of property?
Well, I think staying out of floodplains has water quality implications, so.
Absolutely. Right.
Okay, is that enough guidance from applicant and staff for us to decide how we wish to proceed? Are there other items to discuss or someone want to offer a disposition? This Hanning's looking contemplative there.
About restrictions to the number of seats.
I think that the better way to go would actually be your initial thought where you're conditioning it on a type of septic system, or it would be, you know, with the condition that it not be a conventional system over 2,000 gallons per day.
I, I don't think us getting into the formula between seats, but why not just direct drive and safe discharge volumes?
I mean, ours are, for the small waste water permit, it's anticipated like daily users, but then it's also just a number of bedrooms.
So there, there's actually two, two criteria, I mean, there's a, there is a criteria for churches. And it is, it is for a number of seats. It's five gallons per seat if they will not have like a kitchen dishwasher or whatever. If they do have a kitchen dishwasher, it's seven gallons per seat. That's what's in our regulations.
So to stay within the 2,000, that would be 282 seats, which sounds like more, more than what they want to build. But once we issue the conditional use, it's a conditional use forever, right? And so.
For the life of use, yeah.
For the life of that use, so.
We are not approving a design. We're approving a use. I think that's.
Right, yep.
All of these, it would seem to me that this specification of a discharge volume what you're trying to get at rather than try to translate it through seats or something.
Right, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that it, it isn't going to impinge on their plans to condition it to restrict the land use to a size that is less, that, that would prohibit a conventional, a large-capacity conventional septic system. Right? I mean, so that even if a mega church bought them out and rebuilt with thousands of seats, you still would make sure that whatever church was there didn't discharge to a large-capacity conventional septic system. Right? If you, if you structure it the way, so I, I'm just going back to the seats in my mind of like not impinging on their plans by, by prohibiting. I mean, because if they wanted to get bigger, they could. They would just have to not use a large-capacity conventional septic system.
Yeah.
Right? So it doesn't prevent, it doesn't prevent wealth of a congregation or a mega church coming in and buying them out. But it would create bounds to water quality protection.
Did you want to condition it to under 2,000 gallons per day, right?
Or if you, if you didn't want to limit the potential growth, then you would do like what, what Matt was agreeing was possible, which is to prohibit on a, a large-capacity septic system. So that, that leaves a property owner the possibility of going for the less than 2,000 gallons per day conventional, or if they wanted to grow, they could, but they would not be allowed to send their wastewater to a large-capacity conventional system.
A large-capacity conventional system is a DEQ-defined term. And let's, let's just be consistent with our.
You might want to tie that gallon per day into the condition.
Well, or let's just forget, why couldn't we just make it a a wastewater volume discharge that we don't have to be interpreting DEQ? And if for some reason they were to develop a mega church, future, they could back, look for addition, different conditional use. So would your concerns be most simply satisfied by a condition that wastewater shall remain below 2,000 gallons per day average?
Well, then that would limit, because couldn't you have like an advanced treatment unit worth over 2,000? That would be still protected.
Okay, so, so maybe we want to go the direction.
Yep.
Because you're adding a sub- added name. You're looking at DEQ rates.
I'm not very fast at some sort of saying.
I'm not very fast at some sort of saying. I've got a church question maybe.
Go right ahead.
So the seven gallons per, assuming they have a kitchen and dishwasher. Seven gallons per seat per day. So. So what churches do when they start to grow before they build a bigger building, they start having two services, right? So if those seats are being used twice, does that affect that calculation or? Because it would affect wastewater, right?
I mean, I think, I think what we go by is what they designed it for. So whether. Yeah, whether they're having two services or one. It would still be the seats of the building.
For that calculation, even though it would affect the amount, the volume of discharge.
Correct.
So you'd want to make sure the septic can accommodate the growth if that's, he did that, I guess. Which is an engineering question.
Yeah, but sounds like the way to get at it is to find some way to, to condition it on a. Level of discharge. I totally agree.
Yep. But that's how they calculate the level of discharge, you know?
Yeah, I mean, then that's up to.
Measures.
Others to figure out the appropriate calculation.
I don't know if there's a specific definition.
All right, well, maybe yours will do. You were using, you were conventional, which then distinguishes from enhanced, additional, advanced, the. Trustrating glossary in terms of use for that. So perhaps the condition is that. Wastewater volumes remain below the threshold. That would require a conventional. Septic system. Of over 2,000 gallon per day capacity. So it's.
It's a, it's a. It's a term in UIC, federal UIC regulations to refer to it as large capacity.
Yeah, don't go federal.
No, but I think, I think the feds gave primacy to the state though.
DEQ does not have primacy. The state of Wyoming does not have primacy per Seating Water Act.
Okay.
But you'll see it in the UIC, in the chapter 25, it's a type 5E2 or something.
Which chapter?
It's chapter 25.
Can you do search?
Mr. Gurch, you know, there's a, there's an elaborate table of. Where the UIC permits are specified in DEQ. Do you remember? Uh, I don't think it is 25, it's, I mean, there are probably 20 different types of UIC permits.
Definition for septic tape.
How do we, how do we move off the dimes?
Well.
Want to table it for future, for more information? It sounds like there's general sympathy moving forward, but also sympathy for some kind of. Corraling wastewater volumes.
Well, how about just wording it? That. That it's conditioned. That any. Wastewater discharge is greater than 2,000 gallons per day must receive. In enhanced treatment, which is a DEQ term, not creatively defined. But.
Okay.
About that.
We can proceed with that and those conditions can be tinkered with if we, at the next level, if there's some, just rewording. A non-substantive change can be made at the next stage. Okay, let's. If you're prepared to, to. Put that in the record and do we want a condition that says no building on the. Floodplain? Again, we understand they won't do that, but. It's not permitting, we're not, we aren't approving it. Design, we're approving it. Can that be handled at significant process for David and Joe?
There's a, sounds like there's a way to get an application to build in the floodplain. So that if you wanted to put a. A hard stop on that, you'd have to condition it. But Jody, you feel like that impinges on their plans or right now they, they really have. Tried to provide, I know it's not a design that anybody can hang their hat on, but it looks like what they want to do fits.
Looks like it fits to me.
Okay.
Yeah, but as you said, we are approving use, not a specific use.
Right.
And, you know, a mega church can come and flood, yeah, and so I'm, I'm all for conditioning.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right, somebody needs to craft this motion, which it sounds like we're close to.
Too many things.
You want to take a stab at that, Mr. Hanning?
Gosh, okay. We'll need to find the script.
And then we'll refer to finding. Water quality necessary finding. That will keep us within the four quarters of the regulations.
Excellent, where you, you. Oh, approval conditions. Yeah, thanks. Okay, I recommend the board of county commissioners approve the new life church conditional use application. CU dash 02 dash 23. Adopting and incorporating. Staff analysis, findings of fact and conclusions of law as just stated in this staff report. Along with the following. Two additional conditions. One being that any development is prohibited in the floodplain. And two is that. Wastewater flows greater than 2,000 gallons per day. Shall receive, oh. These will be, shall receive and must be enhanced treatment.
Must receive enhanced treatment.
Okay.
Okay.
To ensure.
To ensure protection of water quality.
I'll second that. Okay. Uh, Mr. Gurch, Mr. Gurch, are you clear on the motion? Since you're going to have to transcribe all this? Yeah, okay, are we clear on the motion? Sounds like it. Further discussions? Thank you for the, the crafting. Ms. Hanning, how about you?
Hi.
It's glad, hi, it's accorded.
Hi.
It's David.
Hi.
Healy, hi, it's unanimous. Thank you, and appreciate your patience as we work through these and just understand that. We're looking at, at possible future, once it leaves our hands. And if you have a congregation 10,000, then will that be grand?
I like your face.
Thank you very much. You need not attend the rest of our meeting. Appreciate your coming by and tell us about the project.
Chad, can I, can I say something?
You may certainly say something anyway.
Thank you. I really appreciate this discussion that we just had. Because for. Quite a while after joining this mission. I've been thinking that we have put a lot of effort into protecting the aquifer. But very little attention to the Laramie River. And I think that. Given that about 50% of the water in Laramie. Is derived from the Laramie River, that we should as. Because most of the river goes to the county. We should pay as much attention to the water quality of the river as we did the aquifer. And I would like us to, when we talk about the Laramie Growth Plan, when we talk about. Parcel sizes outside of the aquifer zone. When we do the comprehensive plan for the, for the county, should we find the money to do this? That we actually should give the Laramie River as much attention as we have given to the apple.
Yeah.
So that is my statement.
And that, and it does show up in our, our findings, which is about water quality, as we just teased out, and that.
So I was happy to see this.
There is certainly language in the existing comprehensive plan that guides are selling, but. Yeah, I, I think just in general, society is becoming too, too long-term requirement impacts, cumulative impacts in particular. All right, do we want to take a short break here before we.
Yes.
About our wastewater regulation.
Yeah.
Which ones with? Wastewater is first on our agenda.
Okay. So I mean, our last meeting, we brought it to you, introduced it. And then I guess we're supposed to come back this meeting to review that and anybody's comments that they have. Mr. Healy provided comments which are included in our, in this, these regulations. So I guess, how would you like to proceed? One of my thoughts was that we could just go through your, your comments on that. So the regulations and then work through them and I could pull that up on the screen.
Is the draft is the same as we saw last time looking to be like, so okay, you haven't modified. First question. And then looking at your cover memo before we dive into the particulars. Changes to the current include the following. Could you just quickly remind us where we are right now? With respect to DEQ regulations and setbacks? If someone comes in looking for a new septic system on the APOC today, what's their process? What rules apply?
To go to, if they want to do wastewater system? So they would have to hire a professional engineer to do the design. And then they would submit that design and they'd have to meet all of their, just the regular criteria of our wastewater permit. And then we would go through the approval process if they meet all the criteria that we have, they would issue permit.
And tied to the aqua protection is just what are the special rules that apply in our wastewater regs currently? That say if you're on the APOC, you have to have it designed by a professional engineer, for example.
Those are in the zoning, but yes, we require what's in the zoning for those.
And that is for new and replacements or just new. What you've written here is new septic systems are required to have advanced treatment. But that would not be true of replacements. I know that's been an issue.
Has that been written? Yeah, that's, that's what that says there. Yeah. I mean, that could be discussed.
And then on, on just a general one, then I can go through all the specific comments. Completed in accordance with engineered plans, the county will inspect. That's what we're doing now is to be spec all of these septics to see that they're being built as per design.
Correct.
Okay. Couple of questions I had as I read your initial memo. Is that acceptable to you guys? It sounds like if you have comments, throw in, I had already thrown mine in a written form and it sounds like just kind of go through those and let's talk, talk through them and see what guidance we want to provide. But bear in mind that this is a work in progress. We're not making a decision here tonight, but trying to provide guidance to our staff to tune up the wastewater regulations. And ultimately, these won't be something that we will even be asked to approve, is my understanding. These, these aren't planning a zoning thing.
Yeah, what we would.
We're just trying to satisfy ourselves that it's adequate.
Well, we, you guys would need to approve the deletion of the section that will be moved. And with that, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but with the next set of kind of changes that we're looking at. After this meeting, we could just lump it kind of all together. And then if, if things are approved next week, we can have, have it all in one document when it comes to zoning. And then we'll have a separate document for just the wastewater regulations themselves.
But we will never be asked to certify the wastewater regs.
Correct.
So our interest in this is that we we not move it out of our purview into theirs until we're convinced that they're, they're going to pick up the baby and treat them well.
Right. And I don't want to move it forward until, I want, it needs to be a package. It needs to be with the amendments to the zoning. So it will stay here until, the wastewater will stay with this until we get there. I mean, we can get, we can like get through the wastewater and say, we're good with that, but I'm not going to take it forward until we get the zoning because we need to delete that at the same time. So.
I think that's appropriate. Others feel differently. Say go. Okay, so yeah, I guess I kind of had the floor because I gave you a blizzard of comments, but the rest of you dive in as we go through this. Do you want to just? I'm looking at my very first one, says installation. The design has to be designed. I just thought that was kind of a tutorial thing. Some of these I thought require explanation, but I guess you guys can agree or disagree.
Can you just say?
I was just, I mean, I've suggested my corrections there, just get rid of design.
Well, what if, I think he's to want an engineer to design it though. But what if he said the design installation, replacement, repair or re, and or removal will be performed by certified?
Well, it says the installation must be designed and certified.
Now I can see, thank you.
Oh, I was suggesting strike the word design.
Sure.
The more substantive comment there was what, what counts as repair?
Yeah.
We have some way to get our arms around, is that a, as I indicated in my comment there? It needs to be duct taped on or?
Well, it counts as repair. Definition or like, is there provision in the small wastewater for like repair versus replacement like there? No, not really. I mean, if, if somebody comes out, I mean, I think you gave the example of the, what was it the?
Yeah, that was in my comment here. I just said if somebody bangs into the riser pipe.
Yeah, yeah, riser like. For something like that, it's like, we don't even necessarily require a permit, you know? Like just, yeah, that's fine. I mean, if it, if it's something like that, it, it goes, it goes into. And I don't, I guess we haven't defined what the difference between a repair and replacement is. To us, a repair that would be more substantial would be like, you're going to do something to the leach field or you're going to replace the tank or whatever. One of the things we have to be cognizant, well, actually, we don't have to be cognizant of non-conforming duty because it's subdivision. So I guess it doesn't matter. So we, we, yeah, subject. I think that's, I think that's something that we need to define.
That was my comment here.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, define rather for the entire document.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are you aware, is there like, does DEQ have a distinction between repair and removal, anything like that?
I'm, I'm not aware, but I'd have to dig into that. But I, I think it's just like a loosely thrown around term.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe another way to think about it is when a repair is related to a failing system versus a functional system. Like if, if the repair is a riser, that has no impact on whether the system is performing properly. If the repair is, there's a surface effluent out in the leach field because the leach field is failing, then that, that's like going to send you in a different direction on your decision tree. If your tank is cracked and isn't watertight, that's a repair that is significant in my mind in terms that the, the system is failing if it's allowing the wastewater to just go from like a kind of a a pressurized point source instead of out in an absorption field or leach field. So I is a system failing if you discover that it's installed right in a fault zone and it's in a vulnerable feature? I don't, I don't know.
Eventually be considered to fail unless, as you say, it's backing up at the bathtub or on the ground surface. That's the only measure. Failed, you're in a septic system.
I mean, how, how we have it in zoning resolution for like non-conforming structures is if it is over 51% of the cost of the structure, then that's a replacement. Or if it's 51% or over, but if it's less than that, then it's a repair. So that's, and that's the standard thing for, you know, probably zoning, but this would be different. And I mean, I think we, we would certainly need some help with coming up with that language. How that would be implemented because that is well beyond my will.
It is costly to replace a leach field, but I don't know if this meets the 51% threshold of the whole system. I don't know. Maybe you have a.
Well, as written here, it's what is it that triggers the need for the? The PE? The PE is, is, it'd be, I think that the subject comes back up later on in terms of what you have to do. So I guess the invitation here would be, if we agree, let's, let's you guys come up with some definitions here that make this thing tractable.
My counter would be, we need some help from maybe people that are more hyperlogically fine.
I can, I'm, I'm willing to take a stab at, at thinking about that and maybe running. It's okay for me to run it through one other commissioner to get feedback without it being on the fringe of our five laws. Okay.
Okay. And I, and I can make a call too to DEQ is like, do you guys kind of run into like, I mean, I don't know if that, they even define those or care about those or whatever. I mean, I, I can at least ask the questions to them.
So far it seems like it's a back of the envelope gut kind of like thing that, that the counties decide one by one.
So what I'll do is I'll call all the district engineers throughout the state and see what they come up with.
What you guys do here?
Yeah, typically DEQs kind of, you got, it looks good on paper initially, but that's the end of it. But all right, there's a little assignment there and I'd be happy to, to, to provide feedback on that response to Mr. Aris. And I'm wondering if maybe a dollars thing, there might be precedent out there for just saying everything, maybe over X dollars. Then I had a question about removal, what was to design about a removal?
Yeah, yeah, I know. Some of this stuff has just been carried over for a long time.
Okay, well, that was, that was the time to.
But you would want to make sure you were abandoning system properly with you.
What does it mean to abandon the system?
Well, disconnected. Fill your tank in with sand so it doesn't someday collapse in and make a hazard at the surface. I don't know.
So don't they have to take it out of the ground or?
So what are the, what are your?
No, I think they can, they can. Trying to think that, that they fill them up with something or, I don't know, I could ask some of the installers what they have.
All right, I guess that is my question. Design and a removal, it seems to be, maybe it belongs in a good practice, but I don't think I need an iron engineer to tell me to walk away.
I'll, I'll glance at that too. I'm thinking about the repair versus replacing the threshold.
And then, then is there an application for repair, replacement, remove?
No, it's, it, the only, if, if we're doing a replacement, there's a box on our regular application that says replacement. Or you have a box and we'll click there. I don't think we have them for repair.
Yeah, because I think, so you'll need to get one. This, this refers to their, to the application.
Well, yeah, that's what it says. Cause I mean, generally under this, it's, it's the permit to construct for the small wastewater facility. So theoretically, I mean, if it's a repair, then it's not a new construction and it's not a new permit. So that, that's where the replacement would come in. So then no, you wouldn't need it for repair.
The PE. Right. Thanks. So just that whole paragraph should do you straight down and refers to the application for replacement, repair, remove.
So I think it would just be the installation for the replacement. Well, construct, install or modify a small wastewater facility. So I guess the modification, like do you require any permit for repairs? Generally not, right?
Do you want to deal with all of the?
So if it's, or, or it could be modified. If it's modified to become like a new, where modified in some way to become a new system.
Right.
Requiring any of the.
I mean, so the leach field is kind of like one of the key factors here because like if you're putting, you have a leach field in, it's failed. You need to put in a new leach field. Now you're putting it in a different area, could have a different perk potentially. And so they go through the whole process to, you know, do that. And repair, it's like, yeah. I mean, though, your, your example, or we have had people like run over like the pipe that goes between the, the house and the tank or whatever. They crush that, so they replace that or whatever. And that's kind of what we think of as repair.
So if we take repair out of this paragraph and define it elsewhere as something that wouldn't need an engineer to deal with.
Sure.
Then you don't have to worry about an application for a repair.
And then I think we would also need to find what modify is because that's kind of, if I remember correctly, out of the Environmental Quality Act, that's, that's what you need. It's like the statutory term, like install, construct or modify a facility. So then that would be in addition to repair or what is modified.
Yeah, I just, if I'm, as I'm reading this, I don't know what I have to do. And so just good regulation just seems like that whole paragraph needs, needs some careful. If there's an app, if it refers to an application, there needs to be one that should be clear what it is that requires the professional engineers.
We'll work on it.
Okay. We're moving along.
My question before we move along, is the word application correct here?
Yes, yes, we have a good application.
There is certainly an application to build a septic system. I was just, I don't, there isn't an application to repair, is there?
Not for the repair, no.
Okay, so that just needs to be.
To replace.
Ordinated.
Or maybe our replacement is a I mean, you just defined a replacement as a new system.
Yeah.
For a new part of the system.
Yeah, you have to define like some threshold in order for it to constitute a new system.
You're replacing the tank, you're replacing the leach field.
Sure.
You're replacing any of the conveyance system because you gotta make sure you're not defining gravity. Like that you're not pulling up some piping between the tank and the leach field. Say you drove heavy equipment across your, the conveyance between the tank and the leach field. And now you discovered that you have a low point in that PVC and now you're getting back up into the house and you have to rip up that section or replace it. You would want to make sure that you are obeying the laws of gravity and sending it the right way. Might want a PE to look at that. I don't know. What do you, what do you think? Is that absurd? I mean, that's already what your inspector is looking at, right? That, that like you're using gravity to your advantage?
Right. They make sure that it's going the way it's supposed to. They measure the distance. There's a lot of distances and things that have to be measured. Make sure the leach field is sized the way the application says.
Yeah, I think to define that as a, as a, something that requires a permit, that would get out. Your solution is the right one. Then if we come in with a new leach field, then it has to jump through all the hoops that the first leach did.
I mean, a repair should meet the, or you know, what the original permit says, as long as it meets that and.
So the application is incorrect here. The PE certifies the plan. I submit the application, but the engineer signs on the plan.
Well, they would sign the application according to this as well. Right now, there's a spot for him to stamp the application. Which is.
I can put in my application anything I want. It's the, the what the plan will be is what they sign, what they design.
Well, and the, the design information is all in that application. Like the per test information, that's in there. All the calculations, it's in there. And then they also include like the actual drawings as well. And so what this says is that they will sign the application and the designs. Because if, if they're doing the application, they should take responsibility for the entire thing.
Okay, I it's probably the correct word for your process, but not the word plan would have been better here, but it's okay.
Plan is part of.
That's okay. I signed the application. I'm submitting the application. I'm the person, not the engineer.
All of you sign it.
Signs the plan that I'm submitting in my application, but I don't mind.
Okay, as long as it's clear to these folks who've signed it, what, what applies. Right, the next substantive piece here would be this, the word new in that next item C. Prior versions of this discussion have had all new and replacement septic system shall be. What is the? What's the thinking there?
Just being sympathetic to the people that already have systems up there and it's going to cost them an extra $10,000 when their septic fails. I, I feel like this is a new, this would be a new rule for those that exist up there. So it'd be really a significant cost if they, the failure happens and they have to to have one of these new systems that they will cost them more than double, you know, the cost of what they put in before. For, I feel like if somebody's going to put in a new system, then they'll know going in what it's going to cost. They, I mean, that's, that's up to them or whatever, but these folks didn't have a choice. And so the other reason is what I would like, I mean, we've discussed it at the county level, even at the board of county commissioners level that if we could find some way to incentivize when they do a replacement, if we could find funding or whatever, so that we. if we could find some way to incentivize when they do a replacement, um, if we could find funding or whatever, so that we could subsidize some of that. We could do that, and then, then if we, we actually found funding to do that, and we could use a program like that, then we could put it in there as required, and it should be a wash for them. So, I mean, those are all my thoughts, now, those are my thoughts, if you want replacement, that's what we'll do, but I'm just, I'm just sympathetic to the folks that are already up there, and this would be a huge cost for them, that they didn't know when they bought their house.
It's, it's a, it's a big deal, our, our CAP recommended new end replacement, so FYI, that's what our consultant told us, we've declined their advice in the past. What, what do we think about this idea? Who, who is it that's going to have to put in more expensive septic?
Just think about me.
Like you?
I bought the house twenty-three years ago.
Yeah, same boat.
Yeah.
Um, well, one thought is, I mean, some, how many of these lots are you running into where they've already used their replacement leach field, and they're out of, they're out of leach field space?
I don't know, I mean, typically, if, if they, they put in a new leach field somewhere else, that other leach field place should like rejuvenate, I don't, I don't know, but I can't, I don't have enough.
The, I guess one, one, one way maybe to, and I, I hear what you're saying about being empathetic to the, to the cost for people, and really, I mean, some of these subdivisions were built with the intention that they would eventually go on centralized sewer. Um, and that hasn't happened, it's in the covenants that, that they will, um, but what about a certain lot size? Replacement of a system on a certain lot size, where we know they just don't have the ability to dilute their flow across an aerial, aerial distance. Because the people who put in their drinking water wells also have the right to be withdrawing safe-to-drink water, um, and not have to drill and deepen their wells, I mean, it's sort of a conundrum of, of, of property right issues. Um, so I don't know, I don't know what to do about it, I'm just wondering if a certain lot size where replacement is needed would be a trigger for an ATU.
I, I mean, I give some sympathy with that, and in that, some of the subdivisions on East Gray that have lot sizes, a third of an acre.
Yeah.
Tiny, there, there's no way in the world you'd ever get a
a lot of leach field.
Permit to, to do that, or a requirement, so I think there might be a, a direction there, um.
Well, what would these people do if the septic failed? They'd have to go through and advance one of these.
Well, if, if we-
ATUs.
As written, they would not, because that would be a new system, that would be a replacement system.
Right, yep.
And that's the question before us, our, so our, our previous versions of this have said new and replacement, that was the, that was the advice of our consultant, I don't need to overplay that, just so we know where we are. And it's a very large deal, it was hugely controversial when it was first suggested. But it was suggested to be protective of groundwater quality, and that's where all this is headed. Jumping ahead to the next one, which is kinda relevant to that, was this idea, let's not do that on, on more than thirty-five, so that speaks to Commissioner Hennings' thought of, maybe there's a, some middle ground in here where my thought and my suggestion here is that we don't need to require advanced systems on those larger lots, whether it's replacement or new or whatever. But maybe we have a second threshold in there that says new or replacement on small lots, like two acres or something. And two acres kind of comes to my mind, that's something that just, uh, standing may have a different opinion, that's a number that one sees nationally is sort of a, that triggers problems with septic, efficient septic. Now, we have specific information here that we have measurable impacts with lot sizes, large, and we've got some nitrate loading.
Would it be hard to get an, an accounting of like the number, the number of lots that that could potentially affect if you set two, two acres or less?
Yeah, we could, we could do the, run a query and figure that out.
Get an idea of like how many households that could impact, maybe you could break it into two and one, less than two, less than one, I don't know.
We could do that.
Just to sort of get a sense of the potential of burden.
Yeah, and so, that's one piece of it, the other is the price, Mr. Gerch, you were throwing out numbers like ten thousand, that's a number that one has heard all over the map, there are folks that uh, that were opposed to any of these regulations that were suggesting this is a sixty thousand dollar ticket, I think that's, that's just crazy talk. Uh, our consultant did address that, what's, what's the source of your ten thousand?
Oh, that, I mean, I actually talked to an installer and I asked them what the cost of the Advantex system was, um, and that's what he said, it was ten thousand dollars, and the rest of it was, or he said it was about a ten, ten thousand dollars for ten or twelve, not that difference. So you're looking at around twenty thousand, and then the, I think in the CAP, it, the numbers are around twenty-something thousand, just a little over twenty thousand for some of those advanced treatment systems, so that seems about right, I mean, my number's probably like, you know, it's really super accurate if you're gonna go out and do it, but like, cuz it, I mean, it'll depend on the length of your leach field and
Sure.
who you hire and all that stuff.
But we ought to be proceeding with some order magnet to kind of number in it, it is, it is fifty thousand.
Sixty, no, it was around twenty thousand.
Not two thousand, extra. Um, okay, so, it, it certainly sounds like a good thing, let's, let's understand what the impact of this is before we make a decision, and particularly those smaller lots, that's where it would make a difference. Uh, there are those who have argued that the installed septics haven't pushed water quality over, say, a ten milligram per liter EPA public standard, uh, very much, the data suggests that there are wells that have exceeded that standard, those are major numbers, so, uh, there is an issue here that we should be addressing, and whether we want to try to back up the train a bit as things get replaced or not, is a bigger, relevant question.
So, what are the chances of coming up with that kind of fund to incentivize or subsidize this, cuz that, that would go a long ways towards solving a problem.
So STANTEC did look into that when they were doing the CAP, and, um, there's some revolving loan things, and but, part of the problem is, is a lot of times it has to be, the money has to go to a public entity, which is to be, we would have come to us, then we'd be giving it to a private entity, which I don't think would work. Um, now, if we have special purpose tax money, um, but I think there's other things on there, probably more priority than that, I don't know, I mean, I guess that's up to the commissioners. That's a potential way to answer that response.
But if, they have a, like, some of these places have road districts, if they made their own wastewater district, then aren't they a subdivision of the state that could directly try to access money?
They, yeah, if they created an improvement district for that, they could, um, tax themselves, get money to do that. But that would be completely their prerogative. Right.
Right, yeah.
No, no.
Right. Their incentive would be to protect their wells.
Right. Yeah, I mean, they might, yeah, if, if there was, where's a problem up there, you know, if it ever happens or whatever, but bunch of the wells started getting contaminated, I mean, maybe they would look into it. I don't know, I don't think there's a whole lot of incentive to do it at this point.
So the GIS exercise, let's not just do one and two, I mean, once you've got those numbers, give us the size distribution of septic in county, and APLC, maybe one, one, two, five, ten. It's, it's, it's easy enough once you've set up the GIS, let's just peel that out so we understand what those distributions look like.
Does, does the county have a legal liability if people's wells get contaminated because we didn't regulate septic? No?
As long as we were using standards which were at least stringent. As to the case. Any of the subdivision permits we have, we're like, no centralized sewers, any on size, so, buyer beware.
I did, to, to that point, uh, DEQ was asked with specific reference to a couple of new subdivisions, if they would do accumulated effects, that's really what this is all about, is cumulative effects. And basically, basically, what DEQ said was, we don't do cumulative effects, if you wanna do something like that, you're on your, now, DEQs, they just treat them one by one.
We do wanna do something right now.
I think so.
Makes sense, yeah.
Uh, alright, what about that next point, uh, are we comfortable with the, something like thirty-five sand, we, we aren't going to worry about it? Even on new ones, if we go over thirty-five, it's a variation, but a slightly different question. Uh, I think that would be consistent with our consultant report.
It seems to be consistent with the spirit of the right change that we approved in February.
Like, was there a reason not to do that, you guys?
So, um, that was something that was stricken after, um, how Lisa Erickson, her, um, such a planner environmental look at it. Um, she felt that was inconsistent with chapter twenty-five, that specific footnote, she thought that applied to every, or she felt like that applies to all the, the properties out there, and that we can't get around that, so, that was, that was what her thoughts were.
Interesting, that's a very ambiguous footnote.
Sure, absolutely, sure, but alright, uh, Mr. Erickson, did you put your mind around this at all? I'm sorry, cuz you were being-
Okay, the, the, the suggestion of my amendment here was that we exempt anybody over thirty-five acres from any enhanced systems. The footnote, chapter twenty-five, table four, I think it is, says, if you are in a public water supply aquifer, you will look at additional treatment, but then it goes on to define additional treatment in a obscure way. So, if we were to do this, are we less stringent than DEQ and therefore in violation?
I'd say until they definitively tell us that we are not astringent, no.
Okay.
Because, as we pointed out, I mean, that's inconsistent even throughout the districts, and what that means, so, I would say, yeah.
Okay, so that would not be inappropriate for us, okay, and, and are we all happy with that? Okay, so the next iteration, we'll see, let's, let's do that. Alright, let's, uh, then my next comment was just out of rag, and I know people talked about, I want a sixty percent removal, but they called the scientists at the table, agree that you gotta have two endpoints to define a percentage. I don't know what Ms. Erickson had to say about that.
Um, I don't think she had a lot to say, I mean, this was just right from the, the plan. So, um, if we need to do something else, then that's, that's something we could use a removal.
I think what was meant is from the tank, or is it from the house? I don't know. Hennings, you got a thought?
It's a point of discharge to the leach field, so that'd be from the tank.
Okay, well then maybe all we do is just say that.
It says that. Says remove a minimum of sixty percent total nitrogen as measured at the discharge point from to the leach field.
Sixty percent, well then, then you gotta go back up, I need two points, if I'm gonna have a percent.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying.
You're telling me the second point, but I gotta have the first.
Sure. Okay.
That would just be the endpoint to the tank.
Yeah, but the problem with this-
I don't even say it. Why is that, how does the manufacturer measure it?
Into the tank, or the number size?
So when I went through these processes where they like talk about the nitrification, the denitrification, and I am not a geologist or a chemist or whatever you have to do to do that, so.
They're talking about their flood from the house, and when it comes to that thing. Yeah, maybe just talk to Ms. Erickson, see if she agrees with that, and let's just say it, I just want to say it.
There's, there's another idea, it's just like, um, the strength of the wastewater can change over time, right, like, there could be one family that lets the water run when they brush their teeth, and another family that is really minimizing water use and generating a higher strength wastewater. Um, I think if you just stuck with the twenty-five milligrams per liter and got rid of trying to account for percentages of reduction, then you'd be meeting the goal, which is to have an effluent of a certain quality on its way out to your leach field.
That makes sense.
And so I would just say strike all sixty percent, strike the percentage, just go to the, the twenty-five.
Let's think about a church with certain seats and a gym, and then a single house, you know, sixty percent of the church is not gonna be the sixty percent of the full family, full member family.
It'd be more straightforward for the county to regulate if it's just, uh, at the point of departure from the treatment into the leach field, you can measure your, your total nitrogen.
Exactly.
Okay, right.
So you're removing a minimum sixty percent.
Removing, yeah, delete.
And we just leave that twenty-five.
And the use of total nitrogen, to speak to your point, Mr. Gerch, is absolutely right, that was the DEQ, and they talk about the keel doll and the nitrates, the nitrates. All that disappears, we wanna do total nitrogen, so this is correctly written by.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Oh, then there, I had some, there's some quibbling about just how you determine this, and I think my comment should speak for itself, that that there are different ways to do this. And a list of approved ATUs, I don't think there is such a list, if there is, we sure, it'd be great if we had one.
Well, and we will, that would, that, we were gonna take what's in, start with what's in the CASP our protection plan that they provided, and then if there's someone that can prove to us, you know, through data and whatever information they give us, then we would add that to the list. So we don't have a list right now, but we would create one.
And then, it was the shall be determined using manufacturer's documentation. Uh, I guess, or in other means, but cover other ways to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe that's, maybe that's fair. And you're saying there will be the list. Uh, my next comment was same point, replacement, repair, just need to sort that all out.
Can you scroll up, please?
Okay, then, if, again, chiming anybody else, I'm just going down the comments that were distributed, I'm down to F now.
Oh, I wanna comment on E.
Please do.
I, I think it would be better to require pumping and inspection every three years. Um, I think I've seen literature that would indicate three years is, I mean, if you, if you're filling up your tank with solids, you're eliminating, as David was just talking about with the nitrogen denitrification, the nitrification step in the quiescent septic tank, you're, you're decreasing that volume of, of that ability to happen when you take up some of the space with too many solids. Um, but also, I just think, systems, people are gonna have their leach fields last longer if they pump every three years. But I, I don't know, I'm, I'm in this, I'm in the three-year pumping camp, I can't wait to go there again.
Mr. Gerch.
Please.
Uh, thank you, um, well, so, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but these permits run with the system, not ownership, right? Yeah, everything, all of our permits run with the property, so whatever's on, so, then, if it's, if you're gonna require three years, then why do you need the transfer of ownership, since it's the system itself that's permitted?
Well, I, I guess that isn't this sort of like a, a fail-safe for people who aren't actually-
Well, but David has a list of all the permits, so if inspections are required, then you just go out for the permit.
Yeah, that'd be okay, but I didn't know where you stood on, on actually being able to implement keeping track of people's systems and, and following up with them as opposed to farming it out to the real estate world.
We're also not gonna, no, I mean, it would be also pretty hard for David to track, um, you know, real estate transactions as well, yeah, cross referencing the real estate records, and flagging ones that specifically have permitted subjects.
Right, yeah, no, it, it's, uh, I just know that Fremont County, they've, they've put it all onto the transfer of ownership to make sure a system- they've, they've put it all onto the transfer of ownership to make sure the system's functioning properly.
Oh, so, and agents are used to that?
Well, I think what they did was they, they went out and educated the, the banks doing the lending and the realtors to say, you know, you want to make sure that the system works for this transfer of this property and that you're not going to lend money to someone on a mortgage who suddenly has to turn around and pay more money to replace a failed system that they didn't know they were buying. And so, I think they've, they've, they've just somehow gotten the real estate and banking community invested in making sure that they're functioning, and it's like a quasi regulatory kind of thing that they've... Yeah, but back at the, I mean, it's not perfect, but I think there's also, what can we really, what can we do in state statute?
But you don't have to use a local realtor or a local bank for, you know?
No, no, and if you could pay cash, then you'd totally subvert the, the system, but...
But your concern is that three years won't be enforced. Is that right? Because otherwise, the, the point is, if I buy a property that was inspected two weeks ago, I shouldn't have to inspect it again. So, if we, if we stick with the language that we've got here, and strike the amendment property as transferred, are we, are we not adequately covered?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you could, you could do it that way, but how do you get, um... So, right now, this would only apply, how do you get existing systems to start maintaining and inspecting every three years? The, the ones in the ground already, aren't, aren't they horses already out of the barn? I mean, it's like...
Yeah, I mean, under the terms of the permit, yeah. Or at least that's what DEQ has set up in earlier chapter 25.
You can, because you can't come back and just say, oh, all you existing systems, we got a new rule for you. Or can you?
Makes me uncomfortable, just in the sense that, I mean, those, those rules are locked in with the permit.
But that would be just as true whether we peg it to three years for the point of transfer. I've still got a permit, as you say, it runs with the property and that property, so I, I don't think that... It's a, it's a good point, but it's, doesn't affect.
Well, tell me if this would run afoul of state law. If, at the point of transfer, you require someone to come in for a new permit.
Oh, yes.
No, that's...
Oh, yes, no, no.
So, I think, so I think this is why Fremont County is doing it the way they're doing it. They can't go and say, all you existing systems, we now got a new rule for you. Instead, they're backdooring it through the realty and banking community and saying...
I don't see a difference, though, because they're still implementing a later rule to something which was pre-existing, which, I mean, that's just general due process principles that...
So, all of this could be, except for new systems.
I mean, eventually, yeah, they're going to require a new permit at some point, because these things don't have infall, you know, ongoing... Yeah.
Yeah. So, when you come in for a replacement and you have to do a new application, that could trigger...
Trigger now.
Okay, that, that needs to be explicit, that, that, that replacement triggers a new application, that's what we talked about earlier.
Yeah, because it's a new permit.
You capture that.
So, then E would have to start out saying, new and replacement system shall be pumped. I mean, you could, you, you could put in, recommend everybody do this to them, but we can't, we can only regulate new and replaced people.
So, the difficulty with some of this is, so we, I'll tell you what we've tried in the past, because we have tried this before. We have regulations that said that you had to have your, your system pumped and inspected. I think it was on a five-year basis at that time. And when you do that, you, your pumper needs to fill out an inspection form and then give it to the property owner, who then was supposed to turn it into us, right? So, yeah, we did that, and the inspection forms, some of them were done really well, but other, just depending on the company, the other company did not do, it was horrible. You know, like, there was no information on it. It was just super vague, and it was, like, on purpose vague, it seemed like, you know? And we probably got like, you know, I'm talking about all these, these inspections we got back, probably like 10, you know? Over like a couple-year period, which we did, we did a lot of, or we did some outreach with people and told them about our new rules. We actually sent out a mass mail or to everybody in the aquifer dictionary with these new rules. And then, you know, there was a few people that treated it. I mean, part of the problem there was, it was going from the pumper to the property owner, and then it had to come to us. And I don't think it made the jump, and I don't know if all the pumbers did all the, you know, did all the forms.
It does depend on the pumper, if they even give you a report.
Yeah, absolutely.
With your, with your, when you, you know, with your bill. Some companies give you a report.
Yes.
And sometimes, sometimes, yeah.
Yeah. When was this? Because I, I didn't remember getting...
Uh, 2012, 13?
Yeah, I do not remember.
I didn't get a notice like that at all.
Yeah, I don't know. We, we sent out every, to all of the addresses that we had on our assessor information, so.
A whole part of the culture.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean, yeah. So, I mean...
Enforcement will be really hard.
Absolutely. I mean, we can send out letters saying, hey, you know, your three month, three years is up. You need to get us this information in, but like, if we don't get, like, say there's 300 septic's in that, in the aquifer protection overlay zone. We do 100 every year. I don't know how many we're going to get back, and we can't hold the pumblers to feed to the fire because we can't. I don't know, we really, I don't know if we have licensing authority or not. That's the discussion that we've been having, but like...
I'm lost on the, if, if you've issued the permit, they've been barely going on about their business, we can't change the parameters of the permit, in a sense, so that all of this applies to new...
Yeah, so if, if that's what we're talking about, new permits, that'd be easy with this.
That's going to be a much smaller set.
Sell it up.
Well, but then you, you at least have a permit that's, that they signed on to that had a requirement. You're not retroactively adding requirements to your permit.
If that's the case, then this will be easy. We can do this. Because there won't be that many, I mean, we'll just do the ones we get each year, and we'll know in three years you have to do it.
That seems comfortable to me, but there is a certain amount of installed infrastructure that we're going to live with. Like you say, we can't back up the train. Let's just get it on the right tracks.
Sure, and that you generally have to under, like, due process principles and property rights.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel totally comfortable. That, that would be stuff, I mean, that's, that's doable for our office. You know, if we were going back with everything up there, that would, we've tried it, didn't work, we can try it again, but I just don't know how.
Because, I mean, how old are some of those developments, the, the smaller lot developments?
Oh, god, about 40 years.
So... Okay, what's the average span of a septic system?
40.
That depends. I, I, I hear about 20 to 30 usually, but like, if you, it depends on who's using them and how well they're maintained and all of that stuff.
Yeah, and how they maintain them. Mine is 60 years old, and all the reports I get from the pumblers is great. Looks perfect. It's good. I ask for the reports from...
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, they don't necessarily give it to you unless you ask.
A leach field.
Yeah.
They said it's mine.
They now put cameras in, the fiber optic cameras in, so you can get it, it could be pulled.
Okay, so we're, you've got some direction there.
They don't necessarily give it to you unless you ask.
These towards new, new or replacing.
Yeah, I did mine last...
New permits, replacing systems requirement.
But I didn't get a camera.
Yes, right.
They did listen.
Yeah.
Mine is...
Got something else you wanted to...
Original.
Our bowl.
I guess they do things well.
Yes, okay. Okay, proceeding to, um... Unless, okay, I'm down to ask, anybody else got anything we've passed, okay? My comment there was just to tie the regulations together, we can start talking vulnerable features and, and the SSIs and things. That's not part of these regs, so somebody has to go refer somewhere else. So, how do we accommodate that cross-referencing, and is that legal? Tell me about that.
I mean, if we're looking at specific definitions, we could put those specific definitions in this document, too.
Yeah, and that could be part of their, I mean, essentially, that engineering report is basically modified SSI, or it could be said, unless, you know, or it could also include, you know, any determination of vulnerable features which were discovered as part of an SSI for the property, should one exist. And I mean, I guess that was the question to you, is, do you want a full SSI if someone needs a replacement septic?
Okay, so there's, that's a second, a secondary question. My first one was just kind of procedurally, but now, yeah. Do we, what do we want to require, and this gets into the coordination with the, with the, with the zoning, where, because we could jump ahead to that question, what is development?
What, what we have to find is up there.
It's pretty broad.
It's broadly, yeah.
Is it? But do we have it, do we want it not to include septic systems? Because otherwise...
Well...
The zoning regulation talks about development, and septic systems are in, we're trying to get them out.
That's, that's true, but, you know, that's also the caveat that, you know, if not for the delegation agreement, we wouldn't have that kind of regulatory authority over them, so just by operation of law, it would be removed. So, therefore, the only place to go is the small wastewater.
Sweet. So, see, my, so you just said that, that the fact that in the zoning regulations, it says development needs a setback, we have to understand that to mean not septic's.
It's development which we can't, right? Through zone.
Which does not include septic's, would be the thought.
Correct.
Okay, so, we will, when we get over to the zoning side, I think we should make that explicit rather than implied.
Okay.
Wouldn't, I mean, that would make sense, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, a person reads development and says, hey, and we're saying, oh, it didn't really mean it. Okay, so, then, back to your question, what do we want to have by way of investigations associated with vulnerable features and replacement systems? The way you've written this, this is written, uh, it would say can be used, was that? SSI can be used. Must be, shall be.
Uh, I didn't, David, did you write that in, or was that language kind of recognizing that there may not be an SSI for a property requiring a newer replacement system?
I mean, I think this, what the intention was, and I'm not sure, I probably, I may have heard it, but was if there was an SSI for like a subdivision, and they've already got that information and figured out where it says, no, built zones, this is where you can put stuff, then we could use that to locate vulnerable features and make sure that there's setback from that, instead of having to go out and do something new just for this. So, an engineer could take that information and apply it, if they, if they felt like they agreed, well, well, you got other investigations, I guess.
Okay, well, so let's step back a layer. Do we want to allow septic's vulnerable features?
They shouldn't be on it.
Well, that's, that's where it starts, okay? If the answer is no, then how do we handle setbacks?
Right.
Well, we're, well, I think it's more, so whatever the def, my recommendation would be, whatever definition of vulnerable features for the zoning resolution is arrived on, that just gets carried over as a sentence into F. So, vulnerable features include, you know, and they'll just carry over that definition, and then it would be, you know, any site or, uh, the, I guess, like, any site-specific investigation which has been done for the property shall be used for the determination of vulnerable features. But then I suppose that if there hasn't been an SSI, then what do, how do you regulate that determination of vulnerable feature identification? Was that through, you know, existing literature, and what, what a professional engineer, or do you need a geologist then?
Or do you bring that whole language out of the zoning right here? It sounds like we're kind of back, that's probably one way, is an SSI is required as part of waste management? That seems...
I mean, how much would it cost to use an SSI?
I know the review is about $1,500. Uh, I don't, I mean, maybe it's double that for the report, I don't know.
And then, does it need to be a peer-reviewed? Because, so, if you're requiring a full SSI, it's peer-reviewed. Someone has a failing septic system. I mean, what, like, then you, they can't inhabit their house for, until that SSI process is done.
Well, the reviews of, the peer reviews of SSIs could, could go anywhere from $300 to $1,000.
Falls in time.
But there's time, so that is the huge thing. I haven't written a lot of SSIs, but single-digit thousands, so that depends how complicated the site is.
Well, the one we did was $1,500.
To do that?
A single parcel or a subdivision?
It was double.
Okay, the peer review.
Peer review, yes, but I don't know the...
Yeah, if it's modified, it should just be an SSI of anything within 100 feet of the sis, of the system or facility. Would that then... Is that something a professional engineer could knock out pretty well, pretty quickly? Because then they're not looking property wise, they're just looking 100 feet of the facility.
It seems like a new, a new system, I mean, I think you raised an important point, that you have people living in a house trying to deal with, like, you've got to replace...
Because that's like, if this needs adding to power.
Yeah, right, so... Can you approach it two different ways? I mean, so, like, I guess not all existing lots would have had an SSI done for subdivision or... Many of them would, wouldn't have.
Most probably not.
Right, yeah. Could you? Right, you don't have to look at the whole parcel, you just have to look at where you're trying to put your system.
I mean, if this is something you guys are interested in, maybe we, we just take what we have and then, I don't know, maybe strip some of it out and make it a smaller side, or, I don't know. We, we can work something up and see if you guys like it.
I guess my sense is that we want this new system particularly to think about vulnerable features and, and apply setbacks. The replacements, I'm a little squishier on, because it's kind of, it's there.
Well, that new system is going to have, I mean, probably 95% of the time, at least, it's going to have an SSI, because it's a new development. Like, if it's a brand-new system and not a replacement.
Well, it...
Yeah, because then it, well, because, I mean, it's not existing in isolation. Either it would have been a house that didn't previously have a septic.
Right.
Or it's a new house.
Right.
And a new house will have an SSI, won't it?
Well...
A new house? No, not necessarily.
So, like, with the...
Subdivision will, but...
Yeah, right. So, when, typically, when we get a, have a professional engineer do this, they, they locate, as part of the application, they locate the vulnerable features, and then they show the setbacks. They, they, they always do that, I mean, but that doesn't include, like, the full-fledged, you know, narrative and all of these things. It's, it's more like, hey, we've looked at these, here's the map, here's where the vulnerable features are, this is 100 feet away.
So, that was your suggestion, is to do a kind of a mini SSI.
Yeah, I mean, if all we care about is where the vulnerable feature is and then setback from it, that doesn't seem like it's too big of a deal.
Right. Because the full SSI talks about history of the site. Because the full SSI talks about history of the site.
Yes.
All right, well.
It's a bigger report, yeah.
I, yeah, I could go with, you guys want to try the mini SSI?
Sure.
Before the wastewater rigs. Okay, yeah, that, my other comment would, would speak to that of how do we, how do we evaluate that information?
So the other thing I'm worried about in F is, is number three. It's just what what does the potential universe of mitigation methods include?
Well, that comes out of that study. It's a little fuzzy, but if the, if the, if the study says, I think we can accommodate that vulnerable feature by putting in a flurry of all the, that we would say, okay, do it.
And then now you have, now you have something that needs to be maintained and verified that is being maintained for it to keep mitigating.
Okay, installed and appropriately maintained.
Right, I, I guess whatever permit got issued would have to wrap in the maintenance and inspection of the mitigation. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, just like, just like you'd be saying that a new system is going to have to be inspected and pumped at some regular periodicity, then can you also be checking on the integrity of the mitigation?
But as far as language here, if you were to simply add after installed and appropriately maintained, you would have principle captured without the implementation.
Can you scroll up, please? Hold down for the.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're right. Yeah, and then my, my little one, just a grammatical will be installed instead of are, small man. Because then we're talking about adding cutovers to the end of that. Okay, other, other comments, or do we, have we addressed that?
We're through.
So the idea is that, so we'll come back with another iteration of this, recording this discussion, see where we are. With assistance from us. So then the next piece is, is a first pass at what happens over on the zoning resolution side.
Terms of striking?
Oh, terms of striking, yeah. Yeah, that's simple. Working the zoning resolution thoroughly here over the next while. But the, I think that the significant thing is what Patricia's pointed out is that, that, that was my concern is that we should resist trying to regulate anything to do with septic design setbacks, et cetera, through the zoning resolution. And so we'll want to, I think, redefine development over on the zoning side to. And that was my main concern, is we get those coordinated. Not a great idea working with that, because.
Is this the? This is still the, this is the wastewater one.
All right, so.
I don't think we moved on. I thought we worked on that.
Well, I just, it was in this same package, was just that.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so are we, uh, getting off spot on, pretty good on the wastewater?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Then let us turn our attention to Aqua for Protection, uh, I guess before we hear our staff report, I think, uh, perhaps naively was thinking this would be the easy piece, where we would just kind of clean up and do what Stanton told us to, but, uh, apparently you guys have done a much more thorough review of this, have some very extensive comments to make on the work over the county commissioners back in, uh, twenty twenty-one. So David, you want to introduce us to what we're doing here?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, what this is, is, is everything else. Um, plus, it should include or supposed to include what's going before the Board of County Commissioners and what we just did, um, kind of in this, this packet that, that you're looking at. Um, so we, what I did was I took everything.
Well, just maybe to say that a little more clearly, because you and I had that discussion, the markup that we got in our packet is not the markup of the current regs. It's the markup of the currently proposed regs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just to say that real clearly for the record.
Yeah, no, it's like all of us. Um, and so, um, so yeah, what we did was we, I took what was in the cap, put that information in there, um, you know, struck, uh, included. Um, and then I sent it to Matt, and then, um, he had some comments. Um, staff met together and went through those, um, and came up with what we felt was legal and what we felt kind of addressed the cap, um, and that's what you have. So, um, it's, again, this is, this is, this is the beginning stage of this part, you know, so this is, if you want to introduce this, um, we can discuss questions tonight, um, but, um, the intent is to, um, come back with maybe some more information, or, you know, you guys have a little more time to look at it and, and, and kind of dive in. But, but obviously, we have, we, we can go through whatever you'd like to tonight, if there's anything that's just like glaring at you guys, which I'm sure there's probably a few things. So we tried to do that because we got to keep you engaged.
Good. So yeah, that was the spirit, which I took it as this is, this is the first step, we're trying to get our minds around all that. So, uh, yeah, if you want to just start at the top, and let's see what we got for questions, comments. And again, this will be one of these where we'll try to provide direction to these guys who what, what you think will and will not be acceptable. You're the word smithing right here, but we want to hurt this, uh, in a useful direction. So should we start at the top? The red line. Got a better plan?
I don't have a better plan.
Okay. Then, uh, I'm looking at a D Aqua for Protection overlay, so I've got my comments on it, but you can chime in.
My first comment starts line one thirty-nine, so.
Oh, all right, well, we'll, 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 these are their different segments.
Yeah.
I found out how to do that awkward.
Well, we were talking about the previous section, I was looking for this, wondering what happened on the lines, and I didn't realize what we're talking about. So you've suggested that we get rid of a lot of the, of the kind of justification, so that guess that came from Mr. Ayers.
Yeah.
First page and then the second page. So what, what's the philosophy there?
So the philosophy is that this is part of the Albany County zoning resolution, which already has a purpose. And that is to promote the health, safety, general welfare.
M R L.
M R L, yeah.
Morels, so I'm M R L.
Oh, yeah, right. You know. So, and, and to be honest, I mean, it's the Aqua for Protection overlay sound, so it's pretty descriptive in, in what it's accomplishing. Um, so yeah, it's just that, and, and I just felt like this was regulatory clutter. All of this incorporation of the findings, when, you know, this isn't, this is the regulation, it's not the findings, we have the plan. That's what's, this is, these regulations are implementing that plan. Um, and, you know, you want the regulatory provisions, not a bunch of preamble that doesn't have regulatory underpinnings or regulatory facts. So I just, yeah, recommend that it incorporates the findings of the, uh, the cap. And then I did go into, oh, because I think that a little bit on the delineation is not a bad idea. Um, just describing, you know, the cap's Kappa is delineated based on uh, the hydrogeologic mapping, and it's tying it directly to that Kappa, which is what I think is, I think that's a good idea. Um, and then you also get, uh, you know, I, I tried to pull up over just a, an explanation of why that seventy-five feet of undisturbed satangas shale is important, because then that comes in later so that it's not just totally coming out of nowhere. Um, but yeah, I, I thought that you could pretty much accomplish, what is that? What was previously three paragraphs into three sentences?
Okay, so I'm hearing kind of a balancing act between bringing in things like seventy-five feet, rather than just say it, go read the cap if you have any concerns. Some of that you think is appropriate here, just not this much.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, I'm okay with that. Did, did it get deleted that, I got it, I'll be in there.
Oh, good. The cap is online, right?
Yeah.
So we can put a reference to, like, a URL where people can find it?
You should, I suppose the issue like is that IT controls those URLs. And I always don't like it when there's like government regulation that has a URL which doesn't take you to anywhere. So I think just referencing it by its like document, date of adoption is.
Well, it may be available through the planning office.
You can, you can search that on the website, it'll come up.
That's why I was thinking also, if you search the term.
Even if you don't know what, yeah, what it's called, whatever, just search.
All right, we do that about five hundred times a day.
If you guys are pros at our website, most changing, so.
Yes.
And we're getting a new URL for our websites.
Remembering the doc, uh, what URL it's called. All right, that, I, that's my, my thoughts. So now we're proceeding, it's, my next comment is, uh, down here on line eighty-seven. Still out of me, okay?
Oh, can we?
Yes, please.
Are, yeah, so addressing definitions. Um, I tried to, so I think that we were, there were a few things that we were defining which we didn't need to, and it wasn't really, like, they were just holdover definitions that are no longer really being used. Um, or there were just ones which, I mean, the resolution itself already defines those, so why do we need to have that appear again? Um, and, yeah, and then for for hazardous material, if you're going to bring in the CFR, the Wyoming Administrative Procedure Act tells you how you can do that, um, and you have to, you know, recognize that the incorporation of full tax will become or some and is inefficient. Um, and I also, it seemed like there was, there was this hazardous waste definition, which I didn't really understand where that came from regulatorily. Um, so I did find that there is a CFR, which is, you know, uh, code of federal regulations. Um, which defined hazardous wastes, and I'm not totally sure if that was the intent for what, you know, we were trying, because I didn't find a definition of hazardous waste under Wyoming law.
You did, okay, I'm glad you stopped us at this, because this, uh, the difference between material and waste, that's what you're bringing up?
Yeah, because, so basically, yeah, we had hazardous material, which was a defined term. But then later on, there was any hazardous waste, I think it was in the, yeah, it was in the table of prohibited uses, which was, you know, any hazardous waste defined under Wyoming, as defined under Wyoming law. Uh, Wyoming statute does not define hazardous waste. Uh, DEQ does, but they just incorporate the CFR.
The CFR for materials?
For hazardous waste. So then I thought, let's just get rid of that and include waste in materials. Because technically, the CFR defines hazardous substance, not material. So I thought, well, if we're already doing substance, let's just do substance and waste and make it material.
Okay.
Because there was, there was, there was an incomplete definition, there was no definition for hazardous waste. There's no source for that.
This captures everything.
Yeah, my concern about this is, I think, you'll respond to hazardous materials, there's all of the listed ways, there's all the characteristic pieces. By the time you get to the bottom of that, it's, you're everything.
Yeah.
Too broad.
Well, so that's.
A gallon of whiskey is a, is a hazardous material.
What's that?
A ga- gallon of whiskey is a hazardous material characteristic.
That's unfortunate.
I would argue.
So, yeah, I mean, I was just going off of what was there, and I mean, I did kind of have a question of like, where this came from in the first place, because, but isn't it also within certain concentrations under those CFRs for hazardous substance, you know?
Quantities.
Quantities, yeah. As it defines like ash liquor.
I just think it was characteristic ways, or it's kind of fuzzy, because it's things that are flammable, for example. All right, let's, we're not going to sort that one out, but let's all look at that, particularly folks that have any experience with hazardous material definitions, so.
Yeah, and then, uh, for pesticides, so, yeah, under the, um, Wyoming pesticide, what is it? The, oh, the Wyoming Environmental Pesticide Control Act nineteen seventy-three. So it does specifically say that no political subdivision of the state shall regulate pesticides in more stringent of a manner, and, uh, they are regulated under this act or the Wyoming Department of Agriculture's rules and regulations promulgated under this act. Which, that basically, so that leaves nowhere for the county to go. Because if we're less stringent, then that would conflict with what they're doing. We can't be more stringent, so. It's, I mean, I left it in there, um, perhaps, you know, if, if that gives people a sense of, you know, security, but, I mean, it's essentially a meaningless provision.
Do you T have any of these defined?
Does the city?
DOT.
Oh, DOT.
Why don't?
No.
I think they do because they have to based on general evaluations, like. Like what you can transport on trains, or you can transport on boat weight and stuff.
I mean, so for those, like, for that hazardous substance and hazardous waste, DEQ defines them, but they just incorporate these same CFRs.
So let's jump ahead and tell us where this matters. Where do we use hazardous material?
Uh, so basically, it's in the table of prohibited uses. I, we noticed a, a pretty pervasive theme where it said this land use, which involves hazardous materials. This land use, which involves hazardous materials. So I said, okay, why do we have like fifty-seven different entries? When it's really. When it's really just hazardous materials, and you can just, anything that is, you know, that any verbiage of hazardous material is prohibited. And as a way of example, I just copied and pasted all of the examples that were existing, and that's why there's like just a laundry list of examples, because it was.
Yeah. But that's, that's what we're seeing down here under the table of prohibited uses.
Yeah.
So regarding the pesticides, can you prohibit it except in certain quantities, or you just, it's?
No, cuz pro, well, this prohibition will be more stringent. Um, yeah, I mean, that's statutory languages. The only thing that you can do is, is just say you have to follow them under state statute. Cuz like, so for, you know, DEQs, there's nothing about the county enacting anything more stringent, except for wastewater quality. Um, but, yeah, it, cuz it, it has to do with that, that rule from like Sarathos and River Springs, where you can foreclose something if statute says you can't otherwise, but any regulation is with the state entity and you can't conflict with or duplicate their regulations.
So even though pesticides would be considered hazardous material, our listing of them in our table of prohibited uses is kind of preemptive. Okay. However, when they passed that, it was brought by a, by a pesticide applicator who was sick and tired of that, different rules, different counties, had some stroke in legislature, so that's where that all came from.
I mean, I believe it.
Running Pete Anderson was the gentleman's name.
Um, yeah, and then the neat oil or petroleum, but not including natural gas or propane is for heating structures or other common residential uses. Uh, I mean, that definition's okay there, um, but then that gets problematic later on in the table of prohibited uses. Because the Wyoming Spring Corps has been very clear that the county cannot, counties cannot regulate public utilities. So I kind of char, or worked in a loophole right before the table of prohibited uses, that this doesn't apply to anything which is a public utility under the statutory definition or is, and is regulated by the Public Service Commission.
Where do we see that?
Um.
Down here by the table of prohibited uses?
Yeah, right, right above. Unless such land use constitutes public utility, and that also bothered me, is the table of prohibited activities. Now, regulate activities, we regulate land uses. Um, and is, yeah, regulated by the Wyoming Public Service Commission.
All right, let's, let's, uh, chew on that, move forward.
Yeah.
Ah, it's a, yeah, I mean, how to get, untangle all these various definitions, hazardous material, hazardous wastes, hazardous substances. It'd be great to sort the.
Yeah.
So, so I have a question, and I think I heard this before. Um, in what we call zone one, a wells, or maintained by the city, some, I don't know who actually owns the zone one.
I think the city owns.
City owns.
All of them, even if they're out in the county?
It may have a lease from the state, but otherwise the city owns that, but not the county.
And because all the.
State land, right? Is it spur well?
Yeah, there's one of the two spur wells.
So, um, the backup power generation, if, uh, power grid goes down, you own diesel. How is that okay with not using oil and on applicable protection?
Well, under the prohibited activities, we have development, broad development. Um, except that which is proposed by the city of Laramie for the protection and usage of the city of Laramie's water wells is prohibited in zone one of the APOZ. And while, yes, that doesn't quite match with the table of prohibited land uses um, under statutory construction or regulation construction, specific controls over the general. So that would be the permission, the controls that would be challenged in court, which one of those applies. So, I mean, I think it's fine to leave it just like that.
I think we should change all of that to solar.
Okay.
That would be my proposal.
I mean, hard to type produce two hundred horsepower of solar in one of the city wells.
Yeah, I know, and, and, uh, the starting, starting the backup full solar, the batteries have to be charged. But, but it's kind of, to me, it seems counterintuitive to have big, big barrels of diesel sitting on top of zone one.
I think they have containment structures.
What? Containment structures? Yeah, but.
Okay, let's try to kind of move through this, so we can get our first pass, understanding this is the first of probably a number of these. Um, was there something else?
Yeah, uh, vulnerable feature, this is a huge one. So, okay, before we had this vulnerable feature definition, uh, which was in the definition section, and then later on, there was vulnerable features requiring a setback, which was a more extensive list than the definition of vulnerable feature.
The other way around, but okay.
Uh,
I thought that, that the first round of vulnerable features was more extensive, and it included things like shallow bedrock and all of that. When we got to setbacks, that was a substance, if I'm remembering that.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, I'm sorry you interrupted.
Well, no, cuz it had that same faults, folds, or open fractures that extend to the ground surface, shallow depth groundwater.
I've, I've seen some in the iteration, this I might be misremembering.
Yeah.
Drainages got left out of that.
But, but drainage has got left out, that was, I had, that was.
So, that, this list for vulnerable feature is the, the list of, uh, vulnerable features requiring setbacks from the cap. With the exception of, they just said, uh, shallow depth to groundwater, and I carried over that seventy feet from the surface, which was previously there, because it's good to have that empirically defined. And the vulnerable feature, I mean, cuz I thought, really, like, what it comes down to for vulnerable features is that you're, it's the vulnerable features that require setback for development. Um, so, I don't understand, I guess I, I don't understand why you wouldn't just define vulnerable features as those requiring setbacks for development.
I, I'd agree with that, I, I, like, Mr. Kornick, I noticed that drainage has got lost in that shovel.
It wasn't in the cap. No, I, I took this from page one forty-six of the cap. Yeah. For vulnerable features requiring setbacks. I mean, I, yeah, I think we can absolutely, at, like, you know, play with this however it is desired, but. I mean, notes.
It took out the exposed bedrock and.
Yeah.
You wanna keep the changes.
I mean, we just went with what the cap said on that.
Right, yeah, you know, but we can go beyond what the cap says.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Y'all have to go back, maybe it was in different places or something, I don't remember having any discussion with anybody who wrote the cap about.
Well, they didn't.
Why they would. Wrote those.
And they didn't def, I mean, they didn't provide a great definition for vulnerable features generally.
I see. And the other, the other thing about that definition that I like to see returned is the at or near the ground surface. Because like, you could have a fault that then has a soil veneer over it, and somebody might argue, well, it's not at the ground surface, it's it's four feet buried, we don't have to worry about it being a vulnerable feature. I mean, because there's like fault traces where there are places where we know where the fault is and exposed bedrock, and we infer that it's going, and I know it pops out again on this other exposed bedrock, and so, so there's inferred places that aren't right at the surface, but would still be vulnerable features.
Could we put a parameter on what near is?
It just strike at the ground surface.
Yeah, well, so, again, that's what they, that's what the cap said.
And that was inherent in front.
You don't have to worry about. It's just, but what is the depth?
It's, it's, that enhances the potential for rapid infiltration, so it would be.
So there is no depth?
There would be no specific depth, it would be that.
Is that workable for practitioners?
I'd say yes, that's a, if it's five hundred feet deep, it doesn't enhance it, it's too ancient it does. But, yeah, I think that's the concept of whether it enhances the potential.
Okay, yeah, so let, I mean, perhaps more technical minds could take a look at vulnerable feature.
Yeah, yeah.
See how we wanna go forward.
First cap, strike the at-ground surface.
Um, okay. Yeah, so then the rest of that is the APOZ boundary staff, which is pending for the commissioners. And then we get to.
Yeah, this, okay, so you're, you're getting ahead of the foot.
Oh.
My comments along the way, well, and it goes back to definitions, explain to us the Kappa versus the APOZ. You've tried that on me before, walk us through that.
Oh, so.
More terms that we need.
So, well, I think that it, cuz we're saying, so for the, the APOZ establishment, what's pending for the commissioners right now, we're saying, you know, northern, southern, eastern boundaries are the northern, southern, eastern boundaries of the cap. But then we deviated from the Kappa for the western. But to create that APOZ boundary, cuz while they're generally the same, there is deviation between the APOZ boundary and the Kappa.
So the Kappa is a creation of the cap.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That's the map and the plan.
The APOZ.
That's the delineation of that plan.
Very the tour map.
Yes.
So we did change. Because I wasn't remembering, we had two, but I guess we did have two different definitions now, we have a Kappa, which only exists in the cap, and we have an APOZ that only exists in the resolution.
And they're different.
And they're different, it's, it's small ways, but they're different, okay. So to keep our terminology straight. Got it. Um, the boundaries, the, the zone one there on line one of two. I don't think we, I don't think there is any zone one that's out of our, outside our APOZ anymore. Right, look at that, this may be redundant.
Oh, it doesn't help.
Yeah, and that's like objections to the.
To add your volumes.
So, and you might look at that, I don't, I think they're all, all those ones are in the APOZ. So we don't need to talk about them separately.
Well, but I guess where it needs to be called out explicitly is later on under the table, or under the prohibited, um, you know, land uses, there's a provision specific to zone one. Otherwise, it wouldn't need to be referenced at all.
Oh, all right, all right, all right, no good point. So we do need to delineate it, even though it is now all within AKA, which was, gotcha, or wasn't. Vulnerable. Okay. I'm down to one twenty-two. Uh, and, and this goes to this most recent lawsuit. Are we not wanting to refer to the Administrative Procedures Act, so? Like, I, to say we're going to move the boundaries as per. Wasn't the decision that the zoning decisions are not subject to review under the APA?
Subject to review, yes.
Okay.
But subject to procedure, no.
All right.
Because the, the APA has a few mechanisms. One is for rulemaking procedure, uh, contested case, so quasi adjudication procedure, and then also judicial review of agency action.
Okay, that was, that's why that flagged, since we're all sensitized to that by the responsive.
Okay.
I can answer the question about the wells, so there, the, one of the spur wells is outside of the protection overlay zone.
Oh, oh, even as we've now redefined it?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Now, it looks like there's another zone one that's, it's outside, but it's in the city, so it's not part of ours.
Well, the turners, I know, were of a concern, but I thought that the city's new APOZ brought them in, but all right, we've addressed my concern. Um, I'm in line one fifty?
Oh, one thirty-nine.
Okay, Mister.
Waiting patiently.
Um, from one thirty-nine, one forty, partial sentence reads, "Under the property of the relevant portion of the property."
Yep.
And I think that first property of should be struck, stripped.
No, it's true.
And now I'm also dead.
Or should it say property or?
It should say or.
Yeah. Instead of striking it.
Two issues there, one is it's, it's redundant. Okay, joke to or.
Good catch, that's why these red lines get hard sometimes.
So one fifty-one, we're gonna ask. What happened at the ending of the sentence?
Yes.
What happened there?
One fifty-one, is it worth it?
If you wanna scroll up to that, it's a real good spread thing.
Yeah.
One fifty, one fifty-one.
Oh.
So. Just a second.
So we need to go back to, I guess, the amendments before the commissioners to see what happened with that.
Yeah.
Oh. Because this is all the pending.
Oh, so maybe that got washed up. All appears to be three.
Yeah, but is it, so, yeah, pay, our lines, um, ninety-eight to two oh one R. Uh, what's before the commissioners right now? No, it's not. I, I'm sorry.
It's like all of section three, right?
It's all section three.
Sure look.
Which was formerly five.
Could have been something else. But I was recreating. I have to do.
So, yeah, either, right, we put these in for, yeah, I mean, conceptual symmetry, but technically, these aren't what, what is in the regulations.
We had a, us three had a very, like, very dirty version of this, and so I went back and tried to clean it up, so. I don't know, it could have been in the. Okay, well, let's just, let's just go find that in the next iteration, I guess, double up. Um, I had a philosophical question, one fifty-nine, in terms of what you wrote in accordance with, is that appropriate to all these references back to, does that bolster this when you're referring to state statute, or is it kind of duplicative? Why don't we just say what it is we're doing? It's the thinking there.
Um, I'd rather answer that question elsewhere.
Okay, okay, well, I just, just, just flagged it, it's kind of like this question, how much science do you bring in? So. If, if we aren't in accordance, then we got a problem, if we are, then we don't need to say. If, if we aren't in accordance, then we got a problem. If we are, then we don't need to say so, but all right, you can pull that. Uh, I'm at 195. Anybody else? And it's this question we asked earlier, what's development mean? That's this, that definition needs to be massaged to accommodate the septics. Where maybe that's clear back at the beginning of the whole, the whole zoning resolution. But like looking, like at line 195, for example, all development shall meet, don't meet septics, you could form this earth. Right?
Yeah, I need to look at exactly where that comes in because there is, there, there is callouts like chapter one, maybe in those early chapters of designing resolution two, the requirements for septics within our, you know, pursuant to the delegation agreement. So I would need, we would need to check on where the best place for that to be harved out would be. But I was thinking you could just, all development except septic systems.
We use the word development, though, just, just right here. It said to 195, 201, 205. So we use it repeatedly. We probably ought to define it in some order if it's something special.
Yeah.
This is steep. This is a definition that exists elsewhere, isn't it?
Sort of. It's an amalgamation of like 185, 201, and maybe 206 or 205 on what they say requires a zoning certificate. Um, is that how we came up with that development definition?
System is a structure.
It is a structure, but it's by that operation of law, it would be regulated by DEQ or whatever entity has a delegation.
Because otherwise, I think, wouldn't meet our definition. We talked about ground disturbance, all kinds of things that.
Yeah.
Um, style question. You, like saying 196, this subsection, does that give us to be, what, what is a subsection? Maybe I ought to just.
Uh, it's that level of the, um.
What's, one level up or two?
Yeah, it's, well, the subsection is, is D, Aqua for Protection Overlay Zone. Because it says these, these regulations, I mean, that's, that's how statute does it, is it defines it based off like paragraph subsection.
So it's the.
Section.
Next higher division.
Uh, so I believe, I believe it goes section, subsection, paragraph, uh, and then some maybe.
Relatively easy to say that subsection D.
Yeah, it'd be easier to just spell it out.
Yeah, that's the capital D at the top.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's, yeah, anywhere you use subsection, uh, yeah, I think that would be not the most.
Yeah, that's because these regulations, I feel like is also, I mean, that, they're, these are like the APOZ regulations, but the regulations, the whole resolution is regulations. So that.
Yeah, so that, I was unclear whether you meant section D is the subsection or section two or section three. Sorry, I just spelled out. That's always good.
Okay.
Um, okay, you, you were touching on the switch between activities and land uses in line 215.
And then I forgot prohibited activities on 202. So prohibited land uses.
Yeah, good. So what's the point there? That zoning is uses, not activities?
Yeah.
Uses instructions.
I mean, these are really more towards land uses, structures.
And we are not, we cannot zone activities.
I mean, it just doesn't have any meaning, statute or.
Can't dance over there. That's an activity. You can't have a dance.
No, you could say you can't have a dance hall, but you can't say you can't dance up there.
Okay. That kind of makes sense. All right, then you've, you've, uh, taken a meat ax to the table of prohibited uses, uh, your point was that they were just redundant over and over and over.
Yeah, it was like listing different examples, but really the only thing I cared about was the hazardous materials.
So then are the examples, do you write yourself into a box if, if I am using hazardous materials, but I'm not one of your examples?
Nah, because they're just examples. That's a, it's a, it's not an exhaustive, examples are not an exhaustive list.
Could be a whole new thing invented that would be.
Right. Sure. And we might, he just took everything we have, listed it. We might be able to like.
Convince.
That too, which we would like.
It was also just kind of a show.
Yeah.
Yeah, reformatting it would be, it would be good if you could do it this way.
It's like a truck dealership, a motorcycle dealership. You could say automotive dealership or something. That might.
It was, it was to illustrate sort of how much of that could be covered in one provision instead of listing it out multiple, multiple times.
Did we in the process though lose this commercial appropriation?
No, we did not. Because of the definitions, if you go to the definition of commercial use at the beginning of the zoning resolution, it says NC home occupa, or home business or home occupation. So.
Okay, that's clear back at the beginning of the whole word.
Yep.
Yeah. And how about I have 33, all commercial extraction limestone et cetera, should be prohibited?
Yes.
So what does this dude about cement?
Well, so they're non-conforming.
Okay.
They're non-conforming. Um, and that is under the, uh, River Springs Limited Liability Company versus Board of County Commissioners of, uh, Teton County and I say or thus, which I'm sure I'm not pronouncing that correctly, versus the Board of County Commissioners of Teton County. Supreme Court did a, I mean, that's, those two cases are really where you see a good example of that. Um, the county can, can foreclose activities, which would otherwise be regulated by a state entity, but they cannot duplicate or conflict with that state regulation. Um, and that, that is the exact language from that case is that the county can prohibit the extraction of sand, gravel, rock, and limestone because under 185201, which says that you can't zone um, to prevent extraction of mineral, uh, resource, those are not considered part of the mineral resource of a property. Because they're, uh, common.
Yeah.
Things, so.
So because some existing use, it can continue.
Yeah.
All right. And if someone wants to come in now and open up a new operation that we prohibited?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we have, I have Wyoming Supreme Court case lots.
That's, yeah, nice. Thanks.
Good question. Further, on the examples of uses, um, right at the very beginning, electricity generation? This is all commercial stuff, right? So like a solar farm or a wind farm would be a prohibited use on the APOZ. I, I think it used to say electric, electricity generation from fossil fuels. And now it just says electric.
I think I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. Yeah, it says commercial generation of electrical power by means of fossil fuels, except generation by means of natural gas or propane. Uh, the issue there is that, like, really gets into public utility, which the county.
Oh, okay.
Because, yeah, any conveyance of any, any sort of like electrical, uh, power or just energy transmission to consumers of Wyoming, that's going to be a public utility.
So a commercial you, commercial generation electricity is by definition a public utility?
If it's going to uh, Wyoming consumers.
It's commercial, yeah.
Uh, interestingly, that like, uh, rail tie, since none of that energy is going to Wyoming, it's not a public utility.
But so we want to keep this the way this is, electricity generation is.
Yeah, and we also, and there's still also the caveat from 4B, no property may be used for any use listed in the table, unless such use constitutes public utility as defined by Wyoming Statute 371101 and is regulated by the Wyoming Public Service Commission. Which is a pretty easy call out to David if he sees a public service commission application. Nothing we can do.
So the, I guess it could be that that's addressed. The rule here is commercial land use involving use hazardous materials. And then this is listed as an example. So if there's an example that doesn't use hazardous materials, does it preempt the, I would think not.
We.
Okay, so let's, let's taking, I think this verdicts example here under item one, where all of these are involved is commercial land uses, that would be commercial home occupation involving la la la. Now, if electricity generation is an example of one of those, but it didn't involve anything to do with hazardous materials, would it be prohibited or not?
It would not.
Not, okay.
Uh, because you go to the regulatory, I mean, you go to the regulation, not the examples.
So with the examples, if there are examples that don't fit, we probably ought to clean those out.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that we certainly should condense that, that list for number one, because it's, but we just kept it in there for illustrative purposes.
So, yeah, we can all kind of go through that list and see if there's one, but that one. Maybe it just says using fossil fuels or something.
Yeah, because like one was.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
You know, like laboratories was like an example for one. That seemed kind of broad, you know?
Well, I don't think this list has been looked at carefully for 20 years.
Yeah, and we're kind of on a kick of land use tables these days.
So, yeah, let's, let's do that. Uh, other thoughts on the land use table?
So it talks about commercial accumulations, commercial solid waste, but then on that example, it says, maybe it's the same thing, landfill or dumps on residential or commercial property. So I mean, if it's a commercial landfill, it's got to be on commercial property. I just wondered about including residential.
Not necessarily, because just the term commercial involves that home business as well, or home occupation. I don't know why that was in there, to be honest, but.
We could just say landfills are dumps. We don't have to say residential or.
Yeah.
Because we don't want them on either.
Yeah, because a commercial land use doesn't necessarily mean that it's a commercially sound property.
So when we talk about home business, what do we mean?
Uh, so, you know, like in your house, you're running like a, an alteration service out of there.
What's an alteration?
Uh, like seam straight, you know, tailoring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that is prohibited?
If they're using hazardous materials.
Oh, if, okay.
Yeah.
I missed that. Sorry. Yeah.
We just, as we comb through these, think about that distinction. There shouldn't be a lot of stuff in the examples that are preempted by the concept. Okay. Um, all right, in interest of time, um, this is something we're going to have to go through eventually at multiple times. Other things on the agenda, uh, looking ahead, is this letter something that's top critical?
Yes.
Okay.
I need it today. Actually, I need it within the next week or so.
Okay, but we, but we need to take care of that at this meeting.
That would be wonderful.
Would it be acceptable to you folks to, let's move on to the other parts of the agenda? I'm delighted that folks have read this with that, this kind of care. Uh, this really is a chance to, uh, to go through the, the rigs and maybe they'll be allowed to come back to these for a long time, uh, because in fairness, even the 2021 overhaul didn't go this deeply. And a lot of that, I think we could, we could compliment Mr. Arizona. He's careful. Look at this. It has received. All right, if that works, uh, then let's, let's go to this letter. Uh, want to introduce this?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, um, Logan Simpson, who helped us with the growth area management plan. Um, they are submitting an application for a nominee or nominating this plan of, or award from the American Planning Association. American Planning Association. It's the National Planning Association. And they, they just asked if we could get some letters of support for that. They provided a template, which I kind of altered. Yeah, we keep, if, if you guys are okay with that, we would just prove that and have charity sign it and I would scan it in and send it to them. If you don't want to do that, that's fine as well. Thoughts, suggestions here?
It's fine. I'm fine.
Okay, uh, I had just submitted a proposal. My name's going to go at the bottom. I, I get to do that.
No, absolutely, yeah. Like I said, I don't need it.
And, uh, permission, Barrett has given me a few person, uh, so I don't know. We need to approve that. We could approve this in concept if you grant me the opportunity to just, you know, there's a couple of grammatical things.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so a motion here would be appropriate.
Yeah, just a permit and I decided that.
I have a motion to, uh, approve this letter of support for the rules.
I said, direct the chair to. Say it and direct the chair to sign.
Oh, well. Okay, is there further discussion of that? Are you seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, aye. Post, same side. Hearing that, um, I'll just get these to you.
Yep.
Take care. Sue and aye. For two, uh, regular meeting dates, um, what's, what are folks thinking about Tuesday's work? There's nothing, none of this is set. So that we could do it every week please. We could have different times, uh, as long as these guys still.
Wednesday is.
Tuesday, Wednesdays.
I was only wondering about March, the spring break. I would like to be gone then. I don't know if I will be. I think it's the fall.
Spring break is school or university?
University, it's the same.
It's the eighth to, well, the 11th to the.
Yeah.
The 11th to the 16th or something.
I looked it up, it was that.
Yeah, I'll be gone.
I'll be gone that way. Said it, wait, do you?
I'll be gone. I, I have a plan to be gone.
What's the consensus of that little conference down there? 14th is in spring break.
Yeah, March 13th. Yeah. March 13th is, I don't think you'll have a poll looking at next year.
Then let's slide that a week with that. Do it.
Yes.
I'm not a slave to the school system. Okay, so that would move us to the 20th?
Okay, sure. That sounds good.
Then otherwise Wednesday's work for folks?
Yes.
At five o'clock? Um, length of the meetings, we tend to have long meetings, but they feel productive to me. I'm open to comment. Are we okay with how we've done this?
Yes.
I appreciate the diligence and tenacity. Were there any comments for you guys on, on schedule otherwise?
I, I didn't have any comments.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead with this as you distributed with the exception of March, which would move to the 20th. And then everything, of course, we are committed to this. We need to give adequate notice of our meetings. It's the only legal requirement. Fair.
Not just that, I mean, I, I think we do this, but if you're not going to be here, let us know. So ahead of time, it's a platocor.
Um, I had asked David just to remind us, and maybe it's just my feeble mind, for all these various projects and what's out for public review and what's, I keep thinking that once it clears our desk. I keep thinking that what's at our desk is a deal, but it is not, uh, so where are we on all these various things?
Yeah, so, um. Next week, the sixteenth, um, the Board of County Commissioners will have a public hearing on the APOZ boundary amendments. Um, the accessory dwelling standards and the access ingress egress standards for subdivisions, so all of those that you've approved already. Um, will be. Looked at, um, public hearing and potentially adopted at that meeting, we'll, we'll see how that all goes. Um, and then for our next meeting, February fourteenth, so we get to spend Valentine's Day together, so.
Better bring a cake.
Jill's gonna bring a pizza that's in the shape of a heart, um, for all of us. And anyways, we'll have the sign regulations on a public hearing for you guys, as well as the fencing regulations for the subdivision standards, so. So that's, those are all the outstanding projects that we have, that's kind of where we're at.
And are you aware of public comment on any of those five?
I have not heard a thing from any, for any of them, so.
Okay, we're doing a good job, or else we're flying under the radar.
Something.
Commissioner, anybody questions on that, where all those projects are? I'm assuming the boundary will, will go fairly smoothly, we. The compromise that we hammered out was pretty well accepted with folks, I. Hesitate to predict what the septic thing will look like, but we'll work that out. Right, under Commissioner comments, uh, the only thing I had were, were just that we should think about that annual training, we haven't scheduled that yet, but. Uh, these guys have put together a presentation for us years past, but if there's anything, let. Let us suggest what we would like to hear about, as well as them suggesting what they think we ought to want to hear about, sometimes those two are exactly the same place. Um, that'll happen, say, April, whatever's convenient for folks, the, the thoughts, do you care? Typically, we do a special meeting, it's just a training.
Yeah, probably needs us to do that, it just seems like we usually have a handful of agendas.
Okay, so keep, keep your eye out for that.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, there's no new. Uh, members, commissioners, so if, if you would like, um, to hear about something, by all means. It's kind of a bird, but if not.
Yeah, I, I don't mind being reminded of things, uh, but yeah, if everyone would just put their minds to what, what I'm useful, and then up to that point. Uh, my appearance here tells you if I was reappointed.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, thank you, uh, and then another round of appointments will come at the end of the year. Uh, and in that general spirit, just kind of starting off the new year, think about, anything about our procedures that you would like to, to comment on? In terms of how the meetings are run, uh, do you feel like you get your, you say what you want to say, uh, too much, too little? Uh, staff reports, those are reports to us, so it's certainly appropriate for us to comment on what would be most useful for those reports to. Uh, but just be aware that all of this is for grabs, want to move forward as, as efficiently as we can. Without undue burden on our loyal staff. And I've got some good feedback from kind of commissioners that, that. Things like adding some of the material we have to staff reports has been well received. All right, so those are just the thoughts as we move into the new year. Your pen handy? Anybody else want to bring anything to the attention of the commissioner?
I'd like to say something, please. Um, yeah, a lot of things in life. I should say a lot of things, some big things happen because they're very marginal things, you can only see a retrospect there at the time, it's not soon. Most progress, I think, occurs just because people do their jobs. One day at a time, attending to the work in front of them. Uh, in the two years I've been here, watching y'all, I'd just like to say. Your work often matters, you're making a difference, you've moved forward. I want to give you that feedback.
Thank you.
So I, I have watched the planning and zoning commission. Twenty years, uh, I, I feel like we're making really good progress and, uh, all of us. Folks that have been advising us, so cleaning up regulations, I mean. I look to a future where we're just doing applications, because we've sorted out all this regulation stuff and, and we're, we're cleaning out old closets and redoing baggage that's accumulated over a very long time. So, yes, thank, thank you and good comments. Any else? Okay, as usual, we've worn down our citizens. Uh, next regular meeting is the fourteenth, uh. Hearing no objections. Let us adjourn.
Thank you.